There it being, uh, six thirty, I'm going to start the zoning board of appeals meeting. The members first with the pledge of allegiance. The pledge of allegiance.
To the right, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In accordance with Mass General law, chapter thirty-eight, section twenty F, this evening is being recorded. The first petition tonight is administrative appeal of Tracy Brothman and Alexander Caracuzzo from a determination by the building commissioner that the subject lots meet the requirements of zoning by law seven point six and is a buildable lot. Subject property located eighteen thirty-five Main Road, Westport, Mass., and shown on assessor's map eighty-three, lot seventy-seven. Voting on this petition will be Jerry Cuttino, Barbara Potlillo, myself, Roger Menard, Johnson Ski, and Ray Elias. First, I'm going to read, uh, first of all, the petition or petition's representative. Can you come forward? Um, the way this is going to work is that the petition will provide whatever information we think is pertinent. The, uh, the board will then ask questions. After the board has completed asking questions, we'll open it up to the public. First off, I'm going to read a letter from Ralph Souza, the zoning enforcement officer which prompted this. Um, "Dear Mr. Caracuzzo and Ms. Potlillo, after review of the submitted documents for map eighty-three, assesses lot seventy-seven, it is determined that the lot in question contains thirty-three thousand two hundred and eighty-four feet of area with a hundred and twenty feet of frontage on Main Road. The above-mentioned lot meets the requirements of the Westport zoning bylaws, article seven point six, pre-existing non-conforming lots, and is therefore a buildable lot. Please be advised that the lot in question must meet the requirements of the Board of Health Conservation Commission requirements of the Westport Historic District before the permits can be issued." Name an address and present, uh, what I do think is pertinent.
So Alex Caracuzzo, eighteen forty-seven Main Road.
Tracy Booth, Saint.
So, good evening, um, and thanks for the opportunity to sit before you this evening, um, to present our appeal. The story behind our appeal is that a surveyor asked the town to make a building determination on lot seventy-seven, um, based on square footage and frontage. The town determined that the lot was buildable and in the letter cited zoning by law seven point six as justification in the town's lot letter that was issued back to the surveyor who I presume requested the, uh, the determination. However, there, if you read seven point by law seven point six, there's a third criteria that needs to be met, um, and that was ignored, um, and it must be met in order to apply seven point six as a justification. And that is the issue of common ownership. So there's square footage, frontage, and common ownership. Um, and so in order to apply seven point six, the lot may not be owned by the same owner of an adjacent lot. So in this case, that's, um, that is indisputably the case here. Lot seventy-seven and seventy-eight are adjacent and they are owned by the same owner and therefore by law seven point six just cannot be applied. Um, you know, the decision to build, to declare three-quarters of an acre of land in Westport Point or anywhere in Westport as buildable is not a decision that should be taken lightly. Uh, this lot letter just grossly oversimplifies the decision process, and there are several other issues that the town also failed to consider in making this determination. So, as I, as we outlined in the, in the appeal, for all practical purposes, the two adjacent lots have been used as a single lot for many years, and they could be considered a single lot for zoning purposes. For instance, lot seventy-seven provides the septic leach field, the well, and parking spaces for the residents on lot seventy-eight. Also, there are easements with the butters that span both lots. Also, there's precedent in Massachusetts case law which provides arguments that these lots should be considered a single lot for zoning purposes. We have included a relevant case citation in our appeal. Also, no consideration was given to the square footage of the easement with the butters which had reduced the effective square footage of lot seventy-seven, and no consideration was given to the location of these easements and whether declaring this a buildable lot would infringe on the rights of the butters or legal parties to these easements. So the town's determination that lot seventy-seven is a separate buildable lot is based on incorrect and incomplete information. So, you know, we're just saying that by law seven point six was incorrectly applied as justification for the town's decision, and we are asking that the town rescind this lot determination in its entirety. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, first of all, I, I, I just want to let everybody understand what an administrative appeal is. An administrative appeal, uh, the zoning enforcement officer has made a determination based on zoning bylaw. The administrative appeal essentially says that the zoning enforcement officer incorrectly administered our zoning bylaws. So this is either, this is a very straightforward, either, either the zoning bylaws were enforced correctly or they were not enforced correctly. So that is, uh, is what we're talking about here. Attorney Blake, can you, can you chime in as far as, uh, 'cause we've run into this situation before.
I'd be, well, I'd be happy to, to, to number one, there's a procedural issue in my opinion, and you're, and we're going to see it in the second appeal as well. The determination by the zoning enforcement officer is not really a final determination. What, what, what should have happened was, they should have waited till the building permit was issued and then appealed on that basis. They could appeal to you that says the building permit was issued in error because it's in violation of zoning. So I, I don't believe that this appeal is right before you, but to, with respect to the, to the whether or not there was a merger doctrine in play here, and that's what you're talking about, is a merger doctrine. There is a case out there from the Land Court, a Dalbec case, that specifically addressed an interpretation of the Westport zoning bylaw, and I, I'm sorry, I've forgotten the date, but at one point, the Land Court said that, that, that particular bylaw protected lots in existence at the time even if they were held in common ownership. So in order for this to, appeal to be successful, you would have to show that there was no protection there. But I would suggest, just like the, the appeal that's about ready to come up, that this one's also suffers from a procedural defect, meaning that it's, it's just not right before you. Typically, it's an appeal once a, a, a determination is made through a issuance of a permit. No permit's been issued here. So we don't really know what the zoning enforcement officer will do when he's got an actual permit before him and actually has plans and the like before him. It may be, he, he may, he may do something different.
Oh, okay. So this is potentially a, um, the, the permit, the, the, the petition is, is, is not appropriate for, for, at this time?
It would be, I think you would probably do a dismissal.
A dismissal.
Uh, for, for, you know, lack of ripeness, meaning that the issue isn't, hasn't been determined enough to come to you.
So it's not really relevant at this point in time?
That's right, and, and that would not prevent them, when a building permit is issued, from certainly coming up and, and making this exact same appeal.
Okay.
It's just, it's just too early, I guess, is the best layman's.
Roger?
Yes.
Uh, I'm, I'm making assumption that, uh, a continuance would not be in order here because this one's not rightfully before.
That's right. I, I agree with that. I think, I don't think a continuance.
I'd like to save them five hundred dollars if I could.
Yeah, or withdrawal without a, without a, uh, without prejudice. If they wanted to withdraw without prejudice, I don't know if you refund them for that.
No, we don't.
I mean, you had to, you know, you had to, um, you had to notice it and stuff, so, you know, I'm sorry, but.
Mm-hmm. So, um, heard from Attorney Blake, zoning board members, we have the option of essentially denying the petition, not acting on it because it's not relevant at this point in time. So does anybody want to make a motion, or do we want to continue?
I would like to say that, uh, for the applicant's purposes, that a number of cases that have come before us since that court case have dealt with the Dalbec. They've used the Dalbec as a precedent. Uh, so the Dalbec was in, in the Harbor area.
Yeah, it was actually a Westport case.
It's a Westport case, uh, and, uh, the town lost that one. What bothers me a little, of course, I guess the Attorney General would have no way to know in advance that the court was going to do this, but the Attorney General's office approves all of our bylaws before they go into effect. They approved that one to go into effect, but apparently it was partially defective, uh, at least according to that court case. Now, there may be other court cases that do something different.
Sure.
So I did want to let you know that.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And I, another comment, too, I just want to add, because again, this, um, you know, you said this is something that's happened before, it'll happen again. Um, so when we, uh, were made aware of the lot letter and, and received a copy of it, uh, you know, I spoke with the zoning enforcement officer and I asked him, you know, what about the issue of common ownership? And he replied, "Well, no one asked me to look into that." So he was only looking at square footage and frontage, and if that is something, if, if common ownership, like if that's something that the zoning enforcement officer does not look at, if he only looks at those two, two factors, um, it's something not right with the way that they're assessing buildable lots or lots in terms of being buildable and the way that the bylaws are written.
Right.
So, I mean, there should be some more, I guess, you know, standard or consistent ways of issuing a letter like that.
Well, another aspect of this is that, uh, we could consider trying to change that bylaw and get rid of that section about common ownership. However, uh, there may have been something in that court case that makes it unique, uh, and so that this could still generally apply, but not in every case, and I don't know the answer to that. You'd have to delve into the actual court case to determine if there was some unusual circumstance that allowed, that, that led the court to, to do this before knocking it out of the bylaw.
Okay.
Yeah. And I, another question, too, again, because I think, again, maybe this will help in the future, but, um, the lot letter, as we saw, was originally issued to a surveyor, not the homeowner or not the owner of the property, uh, in question. Um, is that something that's typically done? Or I would expect that it would be issued to the.
Generally goes to the.
The deed holder or the.
Yes, the owner.
Right. That's, as far as I'm aware, that, that did not happen, and we were made aware of it because, uh, a copy was shared with us, yeah, by, by chance, but.
The surveyor, just to clarify this, surveyor could, uh, act on behalf of the owner if they're clearly, uh, allowed to do that.
Yeah. But if it were, if it were issued to the, to the owner, I mean, would that trigger a notice to a butters? Because there was no notice to.
No, that probably wouldn't happen until.
There's a permit.
Until there's a permit, and then Ralph would then have to then approve the permit and then it would.
Yeah, well, it'd have to be an appeal to that, too, because, I mean, every time somebody gets a building permit, they don't notify the butters.
Right.
So, if, if I may, uh, to answer your question, they, they are correct, but the issuance of a building permit does not trigger a butter notification. So the suggestion is that, and I know it's, it's a burden on you, but is to check in frequently with the building department to find out if a building permit has issued, so then your time for appeal would have widened, or if a special permit was required. I don't think there was in this ca, there is in this case, but that's when the, that's when it would, and, and the Dalbec is D-A-L-B-E-C, I think it said.
Yes.
D-A-L-B-E-C.
Yes. Do we have a motion to?
Can I, I just, uh, would like to say, I think these are really good points that you're bringing forth, and, um, it would have been nice to have had this counsel. Uh, I'm sure that it would have been nice for Maria and for us as a, as a body to understand that better from the get-go, um, because the, the sequencing of this where somebody gets a, um, an approval to build, uh, I can see where somebody next door that might not agree with that would want to, uh, come forward sooner than later, because after a building permit has been given, then it seems like that's another step down the road, and, um, it seems to me that would be harder, then you've got, you know, the, the owners themselves are now more dug in with it. It just seems, I, you know, I really, I had no idea, I'm really surprised that this is not something that is, um, right at this stage, and I think it's important that we all understand that and that when anybody else comes in to ask about things like this, since it's come for us before, which I really didn't realize, uh, that we have the proper information to give them as to when the time is correct that they should come forward. And I just wonder what would, um, what circumstances, once a building inspector has approved, uh, has given a letter saying, "Okay, yes, it's a buildable lot," and then, uh, and then a building permit has been, um, given, why, what would be the reason at that point for a building inspector, for the building inspector or zoning enforcement office to, officer to, uh, to go back on his original decision?
I can just give some information, because Maria.
Can you speak up?
So, so I'm, Tracy, so when, when we did learn about, about this buildable lot situation, we didn't know where to go, and I did email Maria, I spoke to her three times on the phone.
Yeah, she's great with information.
Yeah, there were other people who spoke to her, other neighbors who had concerns and considerations, and they spoke to her, too, and we didn't really understand how we would go about the process because we didn't, we weren't given any notification. Someone else was, and then they shared it with us. So it was kind of confusing.
Yeah.
And we decided, because the recommendation was made not to spend five hundred dollars and to wait until the Board of Health made a septic determination. That was the course that we were given, but we felt that it would be in the benefit of everyone just to kind of bring the process to light, and that's why we came, because we could have, we understood, we understood that we could have waited, but that would have taken the homeowner down the path even further, and it's not, it's not very productive for anyone for that to happen, so that's why. And they said, "You can't even do an appeal to a lot letter." And my response was, "Well, we're going to try to," because we'd like, we'd like to just start at the very beginning of the process so that, so that we have clarity and so that there's transparency and we learn about, learn about it that way.
Well, we've all learned about it.
Did you say, did the Board of Health do anything yet?
Um, I believe there's been a perk test.
Okay.
I think, I believe there's been a, oh, no, Board of Health, no, um, but, um, yeah, they have not. As far as we know, we haven't seen any other.
Yeah, 'cause you had mentioned, one of the things would be to wait for the Board of Health to do something, but they haven't yet.
Yeah, I mean, we were operating under the assumption that if we had a lot letter, we could appeal it, and we weren't a hundred percent sure, that was the guidance we received, and so we sort of went that way. But again, um, you know, all the butters and a number of other neighbors are very concerned about this. I mean, they're thinking down the line, like, you know, all the arguments you can imagine. Health, character of the neighborhood, it's population density, it's population density and that's on the point. There's a number of folks in the audience tonight who are concerned, and, um, you know, honestly, the, um, the owner of the property is also about to go down a road where it's going to get more and more expensive for both, both sides. So we're just trying to, you know, hit this off as soon as we can.
So I guess what I, why I ask that question, of what health, it might be in your best interest to also follow along with the Board of Health and, and as this progresses, not just depending on the building permit, uh, but, uh, you, you would need to wait for the Board of Health, uh, excuse me, the building permit, uh, the building inspector, perhaps to come here, but at least it would give you, by going, staying on top of the Board of Health, uh, it would give you some indication that we're getting closer, closer to, to do this.
Good. No, thank you, and we are prepared to keep eyeing this the whole way, and so are the neighbors and butters.
I have a general question to our town council. I'm not certain that you're an expert on open meeting law and freedom of information and all that, but I have a question. Uh, in a situation like this, would the Freedom of Information Act or records law help, be of any help where they could, uh, ask at this point to say, "I would like records of, of this," if and when a building permit is applied for?
Um, I, I don't typically, you don't do.
Future or?
Yeah, you typically don't do future, um, certainly anything in the past. Um, but, but I, I do think that wherever the building office is, is you could certainly sit down and ask them and give you contact information and ask them to notify you if a building permit issues. I don't know that there's a legal obligation to do it, but I think a lot of building departments do when they know that there's an issue.
Especially after you pay five hundred dollars to come here.
Yeah.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
I'd just like to add one, one thing. You, you guys mentioned the Board of Health. They're not under any of our approval here, and generally Ralph says that, but in the nineties, that septic system was upgraded or done something to that. There's a plan to that, and I'm, I'm assuming that that's one, one lot at that time.
Yeah, we've, we've seen the, uh, the current status of the two lots and where the leach field and pipes and, uh, you know, parts of the septic in the span of both lots, and I have not.
But they probably, I'm sure the Board of Health has a, a engineered plan that, that might indicate that it's one.
Well, then, you know, even that can be an issue because unless there's, unless there's a building that straddles it, it still could be identified as two separate lots, because they were originally two separate lots, and there's only, the argument is if they are co-owned or they then become one lot, and there is a, 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 a court case against Westport that Westport lost, saying that, no, in fact, co, co-owned adjacent lots retain their ownership of individual lots.
Well, we're talking about two non-conforming lots.
Well, that's, but, but they were probably not non-conforming when, uh.
They, they would have had to have been conforming at the time.
At the time.
At the time they were created.
At the time they were created.
But, and your new bylaw doesn't have that in it. It's the, it was the old one. I think the old one was in nineteen eighty-two or something, so what we'd have to do is determine when the lots were created.
Right.
And if they were created.
Before seventy-four, I think, was the last.
Okay, if they were created in the time where that, that old bylaw was in effect, then they will be protected unless, I, I mean, I, I suppose, and Dalbec doesn't address this, if, like we, like you just said, if they had a building that straddled the line, then they're very, there's a good argument to be made that those did merge for purposes of, because there's a building on each one, and each one, if you, if you divided it up, then the buildings would, would be non-conforming, they wouldn't conform with everything. So there's probably an argument to be made about, um, that, and, and that's why it's always best to have at least a building permit in front of you, 'cause you, then you know it's going to be, that, you know, it's concrete rather than this, hey, can we build on it? Yeah, there's a lot of other things that could come into play right now. It could be, Board of Health could say, "No, you have a system here and there, and we're not going to allow you to do anything else with the system, you're stuck." You know, things like that. So at this point, it is premature.
Okay. Well, I mean, you, you have the option of withdrawing, or, or, like I said, we could, we could vote to dismiss, so.
I would like to make a motion that we dismiss this situation on the basis that it's premature.
I'll second that.
All, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? No, the record shows unanimous. I mean, I appreciate you coming here because it's, I mean, you said to spend five hundred dollars and, and, you know, you know, there's nothing we can do about that, but, uh, getting this out in the open is important for everybody.
Yep.
And this is a big issue not only for that lot, but across, across the town, because there are a lot of situations that are very similar to this.
Yep.
And we have to administer the law, unique, you know, across, across everybody. So, it's, you know, I, I'm glad you came here, you know, with, like I said, you know, I'm sorry you had to spend a five hundred dollars, but, you know, it's a learning experience, and you, you'll learn now to, that you get to keep, keep up with, to keep track of what's going on with the building permits and the, uh, septic permits, so that as something goes forward, then you can appeal that, uh, properly.
That's great, thank you. I, we appreciate the board's consideration of this and the helpful discussions, and thank you very much.
Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Okay.
Right, right. I remember, I remember, but I didn't, I didn't know that there was actually a, a reason behind it, but I remember you saying that. Thanks, Maria. Oh, could I ask that?
All right, attention, okay, I'm going to, my gavel.
I wish I could whistle, but I can't.
Okay, I'm going to start the second, uh, the second petition.
Roger. We need to go.
At ease! He's trying to talk.
Uh, second petition is four thirty-eight Old Harbor Road. It's administrative appeal of Kevin Brayton McGough with a determination by the building commissioner that the use of the property of four thirty-five Old Harbor Road for educational services would be allowed, provided that the planning board approves the site plan as mandated by zoning bylaw, article eight, section eight, seven. Property is, subject property is located four thirty-five Old Harbor Road, Westport, Mass., shown on assessor's map, lot eighty-seven, lot two. I discussed this a little bit again with, with Attorney Blake, and Attorney Blake, can you?
Happy to. I, I think everybody in the audience that was here for the last half an hour had a preview for what I'm going to say. I believe that, again, this is a, this is a preliminary interpretation by the zoning enforcement officer. There's been no permit that's been issued, and there's been frankly no concrete plans that I can see, um, for the determination. So at this point, you know, in my opinion, there's really, again, this is a ripeness issue. Secondly, I, I've looked at a, what is known, what was called a response to administrative appeal by Kevin Brayton McGough by Attorney Burke, who indicates, um, that the appealer, the person appealing this, lives approximately three thousand nine hundred and some odd feet from the property. In a zoning appeal to the courts, you have to be in a butter to a butter within three hundred feet. That's a standing requirement. Similarly, an appeal to the zoning board has the same requirement. So if this appellant can't prove that he is hurt, he is harmed, different in kind from the rest of the neighborhood outside of there, again, there's no standing. So I, I think that this appeal may suffer from, from two things, lack of ripeness and standing. Be that as it may, um, I, I will also, like I did with the other one, when we talked a little bit about Dalbec, I will tell you, with respect to an educational use, I reviewed your zoning bylaw. I understand the educational use to be allowed in a residential agricultural area with a special permit granting authority being the, the planning board. And with respect to the educational use, that is not defined in your bylaw. So typically, when there's not a definition of the bylaw, we will go to case law, and as luck would have it, the so-called Dover Amendment protects educational uses. So there's a significant body of law that talks about educational uses. In, in that context, educational uses that in the Supreme Judicial Court in a, in a very recent case over in, it's not Belmont, because it's, uh, Lincoln, I think, McLean Hospital versus Lincoln. And in that case, the Supreme Judicial Court said that we articulated two-pronged tests to determine whether a proposed use falls within the protections of the Dover Amendments. And I use the Dover Amendment because, again, this is a, this is an educational use type of, of analysis. First, the use must have its bona fide goal, something that can reasonably be described as educationally significant. Second, the educationally significant goal must be the primary or dominant purpose for which the land or structures would be used. The court goes on to discuss each prong, and the first one says, "The word educational, as used in the Dover Amendment, has been construed on numerous occasions for more than a hundred and twenty years as a broad, comprehensive term. Over time, we have made clear that the protections of the Dover Amendment, educational use, are not to be limited only to those facilities closely analogous to traditional schools and colleges, but rather, the term educational encompasses that which is in the process of developing and training the powers and capabilities of the human being. Thus, the definition embraces fully the idea that education is the process of preparing persons for activities and usefulness in life. Indeed, we have repeatedly have held that a program that instills a basic understanding of how to cope with the everyday problems and to maintain oneself in society is incontestably an educational process." So I don't know the, the entire facts of what's going to go in there, because I don't think anybody does, because we haven't had a hearing, we haven't seen what's going on. I do understand that the. I do understand that the planning board is in the process of holding hearings to determine what's going on in there. But be that as it may, just so that you know, educational use doesn't mean that kids are going there and sitting in a classroom with textbooks being taught by a teacher. So it's a broad definition. So in the event that you decide you wanted to go forward tonight, you know, I'm happy to reread those definitions to you. But again, I do think that this one suffers the same infirmities as the first one with respect to the rightness and secondly, and maybe as importantly, there's also a standing issue.
Yeah, and I, thank you Attorney Blake. And I specifically wanted Attorney Blake to go through all that detail because our bylaw is so narrow as far as it just says "educational use" and none of us really have an understanding of that, exactly what that entails and what the courts would uphold. So I wanted Attorney Blake to identify how broad educational use is, is considered by the courts so that if we were to go forward, we would, we would have that kind of understanding. And I, you know, and I thank you Attorney Blake for doing that for all of our, for the board's cases as well as for the, for the public. But once again, we're in a situation where, you know, and I've read the petition and it's really just a recommendation, there's really nothing, and I appreciate they want to go forward, you know, that you want to snip it in the bud as quickly as you can before it gets too far. But the appropriate point to do this would be, you know, after a permit is, you know, after it's gone through the planning board where, you know, where they've made a determination that this is or is not an appropriate facility and then they would appeal something that's valid rather than appealing a letter from Ralph saying his interpretation is that it's, that it's educational. So I believe that, again, this, that we should dismiss this before we even bring up the petition because I don't think it's a, you know, according to Attorney Blake, that it's a valid petition. So I will make that, that motion to dismiss. Do we have a second?
No public comment?
With no public comment.
Why?
I'd like a continuation. I was never delivered to rebuttal.
What?
I was never delivered to rebuttal.
I couldn't see what you said.
I'm sorry. I was never delivered to rebuttal.
Well, this is going to make a difference. If we dismiss, then this whole process is going to start over again when you, when there's an actual thing that you are going to try appeal to. There's really nothing you are appealing to because there has been no decision made. There's only been a recommendation and you can't appeal a recommendation. That's, that, administrative appeal has certain law rules. The rule is there has to be a decision made. Decision has not been made so you can't appeal something that hasn't been made yet. So I make a motion to dismiss. Do we have a second?
I did second.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. And believe me, I think that we need to continue this because this is, this is, this is a big effort and the town should really understand exactly, and obviously the neighbors are very concerned about this, but the town needs to understand how, how far to go with what can sit, what is considered educational use because it's not, it's not specified in our bylaws. We can only go by what Attorney Blake has said is court case on how, if we made a decision, how the courts would interpret our decision.
Did Attorney Blake, did you, the Dover Amendment only applies to nonprofits, correct?
You are, you are correct. Now, I mean, I see the look on your face like, you know, Perry Mason movie. But no, what I'm saying is, is I'm saying is that the bylaw doesn't define educational use. So we don't sit here and say, oh, we don't know what educational is, so what we do is we go to, we go to the courts and we look at what a court has traditionally found as an educational use. I do a lot of appellate tax for use, cases. There's an exemption from taxation for educational uses and they, they interpret this same very broad. They don't, they don't, it's not just that you, like I said, that you have a teacher up here with 15 kids, adults, whatever, teaching from a textbook. They take a very broad view. So that's why I took a case that educational use is the main focus here and this is what the Supreme Judicial Court has said.
That's fine. I think we should have afforded some time to talk based on the time that we're using also.
Not if, not if it is not a valid, this is not the proper time or place to do that. We want to hear it, but we want to hear it in the proper ti, I really want to hear it because this is something that is going to, you know, that we all need to understand the boundary and the limits of what educational use is for, especially when you do this in a residential area. But we need to do it at the right time, not, you know, not in the case that's not appropriate.
I had some really good arguments that I think it is a right enough time, but we're not having the opportunity to present this, so that's okay.
Well, we didn't even, first off, we usually allow the petition to sit in front of us and we didn't even...
I discussed this with Attorney Blake ahead of time and he suggested that, that if it is not, if it's not an appropriate petition that we can, we should really dismiss without, and by the way, I mean, I've been doing this for over 10 years. This is the first time that we've ever, ever dismissed a case without hearing it.
Can I just ask one question? It's procedural, excepting that it's not right, the, one of the issues that I've identified here is that as part of a planning board application or redetermination, you need to have an acknowledgement that it's conforming with zoning. So they're using this letter as their acknowledgement from the city of the town on here that it's conforming with zoning. So all things aside, with merits up in place, my question is, does that affect or is that going into your consideration as to rightness?
Well, I, since I, I don't know that, I don't know that that's true. If you go before a planning board, I don't know that you need to show that it's conforming. I think at the point you're asking at the planning board probably for a site plan review, the planning board can very well say that we don't do site plan because it's not allowed in the, it's not allowed in the district or something to that effect.
They included in their application for preliminary here and they included that as proof of a conform.
Clearly an administrative action. There's no other way to read it.
Well, what I'm saying here is...
Being relied on by a purchaser of a very expensive property.
And they, and that, and that guy may have relied on something that could get him in a lot of trouble because, believe me, I've represented many towns where that's been the case. But you're not done. What I'm saying is, is that you're, there's a process and as soon as they issue a permit, a certificate of occupancy or any other final decision like that, then you can appeal and say it's a violation of the zoning bylaw.
But if they're including it as evidence of, of the town as a permission saying this is permitted by zoning, my question would be, does that affect your analysis as a warden? If so, would you accept the continuance on it so that we can make that case and essentially bring it full, on the full merits at the outset rather than when we're down the line and everybody's invested in it?
But all we're saying is that there is a proper time for appealing something and you appeal something when a decision is made, not when it's a recommendation. And that's all that we have at the moment. When the planning board makes a determination, you appeal it because a decision has been made and, and you can appeal it under, as a zoning violation. At the moment, there's nothing to appeal.
Jim White was very clear that they're, they have no purview on this.
Absolutely.
As to whether it's education.
Yes.
That he said it's education, so we're looking at whether we have enough parking space.
But they haven't made it, but, but...
But he did. He said that in the last video. That's what he said.
Videos are great. Until they, until they stamp something saying that we now approve this to be done, that's when a decision has been made. Somebody talking on, you know, you know, it's not the same thing as a, as a written decision.
Now, for a site plan review, typically they're unappealable until a building permit is issued. When they, when a building permit is issued, a certificate of occupancy or is issued, one of those, that's when you attack, that's when you challenge. At this point, we don't, you know, we're not 100% sure of what's going on because we've, we've seen a broad discussion of what's going to be there. We don't, we didn't even have a decent administrative record before us to understand it.
Understood, but they're going to argue it's late once we appeal it. Well, if they, if you appeal it to here, I don't know that they're going to be able
to argue it's late. If it's, if it's, if you, if they issue, if a building permit's issued, you got 30 days to appeal that building permit. And there's no court of land that's going to throw it out because you didn't appeal it prior. In fact, a lot of courts will throw them out if you appeal before the issuance of the building permit. So they can, they can argue all they want, but when, when there's a final determination and an action taken, building permit, certificate of occupancy, that's when you make your, make your appeal, like the guy before you.
As long as you'll stand by that, I think.
I'm on video. That doesn't matter.
I'm sorry. Is it fair to say that all the preceding writings from the town have absolutely zero weight, either authorizing or not authorizing whatever's proposed for the property?
I mean, it has a weight to the planning board.
Well, then I should be able to...
That has a, the planning board, when the planning board, no, that should be part of the planning board process, but then when they approve it...
But that's not the way it was...
Then that becomes, then, then you appeal that as, as a violation of zoning.
So I would say that if the letter so far has some weight, that it's an administrative action that we should be able to discuss.
Well, we've already made a determination.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'd also like to point out that that's not the only reason we just did what we did. Part of it is a legal aspect that the applicant for this hearing right now does not have legal standing.
Right.
That means it's void.
Well, under one criteria. There's other case law that will expand beyond just the linear measurement. So for example, we're clearly within walking...
Could you present that now so that our attorney can...
I didn't get, I didn't get the vote. That's why we wanted to get the continuance.
I'm saying, you said there's other legal cases that would address that. So if you could point them out, maybe...
Jerry, we've already, we've already made a decision.
Well, I understand, but if we did it wrongly, I...
You guys voted. I think you...
Yeah, we did.
I'm only in a second. Oh, you didn't?
We did vote, yes.
But just for educational purposes, other than...
We, we voted to dismiss.
Okay, but just going forward for, to educate all of us, can you explain other than the eight tenths of a mile away from the property as opposed to being in a butter or a butter's a butter, what other criteria there would be? Because somebody else would have to bring this forward, correct?
Right, you would have to be harmed different in kind from the surrounding neighbors. For some, some way you would have to show that the harm from this project is different than, than everybody else around you, outside of the butters.
Yeah, it's actually very expansive and I think just being within walking range of this would clearly meet all the criteria.
I, you know, I tend to disagree with that because if that were the case, then the standing would go out.
I don't think it's a, but it's not a determinative issue and we shouldn't be able to state our case.
Standing is absolutely determinative. Cases go to the Supreme Court and they say, sorry, you don't have, you didn't have standing down below, get out. And that's harsh because they spent hundreds of thousands of dollars. So I do think it's determinative. And again, you know, appealing a recommendation unless and until we, you know, I keep harping on this, but unless and until we get a permit for that.
But so your, so your position is, is then that Ralph's determination is absolutely meaningless. It has zero weight. It's not binding in any way, it shouldn't induce the buyers or the sellers to have a belief that they're going to meet the zoning requirements.
I am saying that you rely on recommendations on a, on, on, on something like that at your own peril as a buyer.
Okay.
I would strongly recommend if I were the buyer, I would have my own attorney doing the zoning analysis and advising me that way.
For profit, keep your number at profit. Yeah, that is another point to bring up. I understand there's case law and I understand your point on that, but the Dover Amendment was written for nonprofit applications to nonprofits.
100%, but I'm just telling you...
So you're looking basically at case dicta, which is a lot different than this case. And I mean, that's a very, that's a lot of dots to put together.
No, I'm not looking at case dicta, I'm looking at the holding of the case. But admittedly...
Cases that can be distinguished.
I don't know that, I don't know how you distinguish the educational use, a not-for-profit educational use versus a nonprofit educational use.
They distinguished it in the Dover Amendment, so I think that they're the ones distinguishing it.
I'm not, you know, on a definitional purpose, on a definitional distinction. I don't know that there is...
I think it's a pretty big distinction.
Okay, great.
They thought it was big enough to include it in the Dover Amendment, legislators.
But as far as the definition of educational use...
Then you end up in court dicta, which is, it can be taken upon advisement, but it's not black and white. You can't just go to somebody's definition and then have a non-analogous case and say, oh, that's what this means. It's just the way it is.
They were looking at whether or not a certain use of a property was education.
Was it nonprofit?
It was nonprofit.
There you go.
It's a, you're making a distinction without meaning...
I think you're hanging on a difference of significance or ignoring a difference of significance.
Mr. Chairman, just for the record, as we always do, we asked the person speaking to identify himself so that she can put it in the record.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm Kevin McGough. I was the appellant.
Okay.
That was not allowed to talk after paying my money and writing my writings, just like the first party, which, I thank you all for your time, I do. You guys do a great job, but I am a little put off by that. I didn't have a lot to say. It was only going to be a few minutes, but I think cutting us off and also not providing the rebuttal from the other side is a little bit, what's the word, difficult procedurally.
I have to agree.
Well, this, this all came, I watched a hearing that was preliminary and the planning board requested, well, this has got to go to zoning to see if this is allowable. I got a letter in front of me from Ralph, who's a zoning official, that says it's allowable. And we have the hearing and we dismiss it based on our attorney's advice.
I just think you don't dismiss something unless it's absolutely clear that there's no merit to it.
But, but at the same time, it says that a building permit has to be issued and then it has to go for a site plan review, which is way more extensive than us, way more extensive. We're just saying yes or no to education. That's all we're really saying here.
I would like to also point out that, number one, Ralph's letter, to my understanding, was issued long before these folks came, before the planning board.
June 12.
Even for a preliminary, because I also watched it, okay? And the other thing, the way I read this letter, Ralph is not saying, yes, you can go ahead and do what you want to do. This was based, my assumption is, based on a meeting with Ralph, not public participation, just that, you know, this is what we want to do, is it okay? And Ralph sees that it's education and he says that after review for educational service would, would be allowed, would be allowed provided the planning board goes along with it. We don't know what these people told Ralph that he was, that they were planning to do and so I don't read it the same exact way, although I would like very much to know more about this.
Yeah.
And I think we all have to keep our eyes on this as it goes through.
Well, I think you're, I think you're exactly right as there are, there is some context to Ralph's letter, but when we, when we read the law in 13, 14, and 15, all it takes is an administrative action to have it be appealable. And I think clearly we have an administrative action. It was taken to the planning board and used as evidence. So if this isn't an administrative action that could be brought at least for a discussion, I'm not sure what is. So I think, yeah, we had an envision at the end of the hearing that perhaps it took this course, but to not even hear the issues and to flesh the issues out in a public setting like the gentleman noted, it was a lot of clearly private discussion facing Ralph's letter. I think that's a little bit odd and surprising. We're not seemingly under incredible time constraints, so to just punt it like that is...
Is there any way that we can back up a minute and even though the vote was taken to dismiss this, which was, I have to say, was done quite in a, in a fashion that was a little, I don't know, coercive in a sense. Not that, I mean, you know, I know that everybody's trying to do their job as well as they can and stay out of legal problems.
You can move to reconsider.
Can we move to reconsider? Because I would like to reconsider and I, I think that, I think that Mr. McGough makes a good point in that at least the people before him, having paid their $500, got to discuss a bit of what was happening and we didn't allow that and so I would like to, I'd like to make a... Not that, I mean, you know, I know that everybody's trying to do their job as well as they can and stay out of legal problems.
You can move to reconsider.
Can we move to reconsider? Because I would like to reconsider. And I think that, I think that Mr. McGough makes a good point in that at least the people before him, having paid their $500, got to discuss a bit of what was happening. And we didn't allow that. And so I would like to, I'd like to make a motion to reconsider and allow them to speak. I mean, instead of...
No, that's just me.
And I'll second that.
Okay, could I have a... Well, it's moving to second, so we can discuss. I personally don't think that we can change a dismissal. But I would personally like to see a lot of public discussion of this. And I don't know if we can do it in this context, in this venue. But I would like very much to see what the issues are, what they think is right or wrong, and so forth. So if there was an opportunity, even informally here, while these people are all assembled to discuss it, I'd love to see that.
I do think you can move to reconsider it.
In the same, it's in our, by the way...
I think, do we do that without an act? Well, we can move to reconsider, but then we may still have to do a dismissal.
You may have to do a dismissal once...
Because of the lack of standing.
Standing or, yeah, final action.
It's in...
I would like to see it.
It's in our procedural rules, that in the same meeting, if during discussions, you know, other information comes to light, we are allowed to reverse the decision and continue on. So I have a motion...
But we can't reverse a decision on lack of standing. I mean, they live where they live.
No, right. I mean, it's still gonna be the same. So I have a motion to reconsider, and I have a second.
Yeah.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, no? Okay. So we'll go the same process as normal. The petitioner or petition representative come forward, identify yourself, and then state your case. We'll ask questions, and then we'll open it to the public.
Petitioner Kevin Gray McGough, thanks for the reconsideration. Like I said before, I really appreciate all your time, because obviously it takes a lot of time and it's in the evening. With regard to the standing, as I mentioned before, it wasn't provided the response by the other party. So I would move that we have a continuation, at least on that point. I haven't had a chance to look up case law. I did read it before this, and I did think I have standing beyond just the linear measurement. There's a lot of factors that the courts and cases will look at. I think squarely we're within standing simply because we're within walking distance of the facility like what's proposed. People could walk off the facility and get to my property. There's clearly things to be concerned about.
So what you're suggesting is that we not dismiss it, but we continue it?
Yeah, on that point. I haven't had a chance to do any sort of research on it. But I have, I'm not gonna make up cases. I've read and do it enough where I felt like I have standing. I believe I did. So I just have a short, just a couple of pages to talk about.
Okay.
So I think fundamentally, why are we here? I think we're here because the buyer, Mr. Weber, I believe his name is, desperately doesn't wanna come before you, the zoning appeals board, and ask for a variance. At the end of the day, that's what he needs, but he wants their proposed business to be used by right and avoid asking the appeals board for a variance. Now, why does he want this? I think it's kind of that old saying, sometimes it's better to ask for forgiveness than for permission. And I think that's an issue here. Yeah, we should talk about this now rather than when it's in full swing. This has been evident from the start with Mr. Weber. He's always been portraying his business in a certain way. So right from the beginning, we had emails. His first email to the town said, "I think we're a nursing home." That was his words. He said, "We should be allowed to, you know, conduct our business because we're a nursing home." Nursing homes aren't mentioned in the Westport bylaws as an allowable use. But then when that wasn't successful, he turned and instead he said, "Well, my business is primarily educational, and therefore I have a use by right. I don't need to go to the zoning board..."
I'd like to clarify something. When are these things taking place at your town? Before the meeting with Ralph? Before the meeting with Ralph? Because I'm not aware of any of what you're talking about.
I sent in all the copies to the clerk.
Okay. I understand the emails, but...
Yeah. But so then they changed, and they said, "Okay, we're, uh, sorry, I lost my place." "We're educational, and therefore under the Westport zoning bylaws 5.1, we have a use by right." Based, after that, then he had his attorney. He's a really smart guy, wrote a wonderful letter to the zoning officer. But this letter noticeably minimized all the aspects of the business that happened to be clearly non-conforming. And it highlighted only the educational aspects. They were developing a theory here that would play into use by right. He only mentioned, the true nature of the business was to mention the statute under which they were licensed. Didn't go in any detail of it. In the letter, his attorney, Mr. Burke, states directly to Mr. Sousa that he believes educational uses correctly describe the proposed uses of the property. And he urges the zoning official, Mr. Sousa, to issue a determination that the proposed use is allowed, subject only to the planning board, meaning it's a use by right. There's no problems with things that are prohibited. So in response, and then limited to the issues that were raised in Mr. Burke's letter, we know the zoning officers can't go off the rails. They have to respond to what's raised in the letters. Mr. Sousa issued a determination, like what we just rehashed, essentially saying, "Yeah, I can see if, I can see that educational uses would be allowed." And that's the letter, the determination that we're appealing now. I'm appealing now. It's just me. So while it was not incorrect that Mr. Sousa noted that the educational uses are noted in the zoning bylaws, what Mr. Weber has done since is really misconstrue that letter to mean more than it actually says. Mr. Weber submitted that letter in support to the planning commission as proof that their proposed uses, beyond educational, which they're allowed, were in conformance with the zoning bylaws. They are not, and the letter from Mr. Sousa doesn't say that. So, listen, let's call a spade a spade here. We've talked a lot about educational. But at the end of the day, Mr. Weber's business is in fact a substance use disorder treatment center. Where do I get that wording? That's the title of the statute under which he's noted that they're authorized, that they're licensed under. I didn't make that up. That's exactly what he's called. That's his business. He runs a rehab center, and that's okay. Let's look at the details a little bit more closely. Now, remember, we have to remember this. We're in a residentially zoned area here, so no commercial businesses are allowed unless it meets a specific exception, a specific allowance in 5.1. Let's look at the three main parts of this business. The revenue generating portions of the business, really what the activity is, the commercial business. First, drug and addiction rehabilitation. That is governed by a license from the Department of Public Health, Public Health, Non-Education. That will be the for-profit business and the primary one of that. That is not allowed by the Westport zoning laws. It just isn't. In a residential zone, especially in a residential zone. Second, boarding twelve people. Their proposal is to board twelve people, residents for some periods of time, in addition to the number of staff that have to be there 24 hours a day. So we're beyond twelve, essentially. Is that allowed by the zoning bylaws? No, no. In fact, the zoning bylaws actually address this issue of how many people can be boarded, and the maximum is four. So is that allowed? No, it's not allowed. And finally, the proposed educational component theory, which Mr. Weber is now focused almost entirely on to support his request for use by right, bypassing the zoning board. Doesn't wanna come here and ask for a variance. Those are not permitted. For-profit education is not permitted in the Business Commercial Section 5.1. It's only a single line item, not defined in the Institutional Public Section where uses are listed. And I would set forth that I don't think that this business falls in that category, and therefore even that. Even the for-profit educational uses aren't allowed under 5.1. So in short, none of the proposed uses, none of the proposed business activities are allowed under the current Westport zoning bylaws. Certainly not a substance use disorder treatment facility. The title of the statute which they're licensed under, didn't make up that name, and specifically, not the boarding of twelve people with multiple 24-hour staff on hand. 5.1 specifically says you can't have more than four. That was written purposefully. We should observe that in a residential area. The only way that Mr. Weber's business could possibly be allowed to operate in a residential area, since they have so many non-conforming uses, is by getting a variance. But to get a variance, as you know, they have to come before the zoning board of appeals, explain what they're going to do. And it's up to the zoning board to either allow or deny. And I have full trust that the zoning board will do a great job there. So as such, the intent of this appeal is to head off the mischaracterizations and the misuse of that June 12th letter as some sort of blanket premature authorization of a clearly prohibited business in a residential neighborhood. Which, to be clear, it may or may not be approved by this zoning appeals board, if and when they ask for a variance. If the developer followed the appropriate procedures, instead of trying to get them in through a contrived end approach as they're trying now, that will be the result. We'll have a request for a variance. So the relief that I'm asking for, and I understand there are issues around this appeal, is either, number one, clarification that the letter is not a determination, that their proposed business as a whole is authorized. We've already touched on that subject. Apparently, it's meaningless to the point where we can just be dismissed without argument, potentially. And alternatively, if this board deems that it is, that the board ruled that such a determination was in fact incorrect, and that the non-conforming uses of this business will be prohibited, or they are prohibited, somebody's about to spend a lot of money. And I think everybody wins if we get this out in the open and figure out whether it's gonna be allowed or not. And with that, I understand the point of being ripe and such, but, you know, if we're not gonna nip this in the bud now, when are we gonna, when we're farther down the road, and we've had investments and more investments? What's the trigger if this isn't a trigger? The way I read the law is, is if we have an administrative action, we can pay our $500, and come make our case and appeal that action. And that's what we did. I appreciate your time. I hope I didn't take too long.
No, you're good. Again, I wanna emphasize what administrative appeal is. And I talked about this with the previous one. We only, we really only have one of two options. Either the zoning enforcement officer correctly administered the zoning bylaws, or he was incorrect in how we administered. That's our only two options. So, you know, you sort of skirted around that. Were you asking for a continuance to do something else?
If we were gonna be dismissed based on the standing, yes, I'm asking for a continuance to better prepare our support for the theory that we are affected in a way that makes me...
Because that is one of the, that is one of the, one of the, one of the issues is that you're not at a butter, and therefore...
Yeah, there are exceptions to that linear rule, the distance rule.
Well, will others sign on?
I think they probably will.
That are butters.
Well, but it's...
Yeah. So anyway, the reason that we appealed is we didn't know if now is the best time or later. We know other way, I know other ways where I'll definitely trigger it, and it will be right.
Right, right.
So out of the respect for the zoning board of appeals, we wanted to raise this as an issue. I think it is important, and I didn't wanna have a situation where you said, "Well, why didn't you come talk to us six months ago?"
Right, right. Yeah, I understand, and I absolutely agree that this is a major issue. It's gonna be, it's gonna be difficult as far as timing, because what you're trying to appeal is a recommendation to... And even when you look at it, what he actually said is correct as far as zoning bylaw. Educational uses are allowed. That's all he said. So it's gonna be, it's gonna be, that's gonna be difficult. What I don't wanna do is I would hate to reject an appeal that's valid in its overall concept on a technicality that what the zoning enforcement officer actually did was correct. Our bylaw allows educational use. That's all he said.
That's what I was saying. I interpret it differently. I say that he just gave an opinion.
The issue goes much bigger than that.
It says "would be okay."
Yeah. And like I said, that was one of the requests that we had. If that is in fact the outcome, that the letter is meaningless, then nothing has progressed as far as authorizing this project.
Right, that's right.
That's right.
That's right.
So if that's the determination, that's, that could be the determination.
So if we went forward with this, we probably would have to say, "Yeah, he did the right thing."
So he's not authorized. There's no authorization for this business.
I don't see him authorizing anything.
No, what he said was correct.
His educational process is allowed, and the next step would be planning board where now this group can get.
So nothing beyond educational has been authorized.
But that's all his letter said.
That's all it says. That's all we have.
We can't authorize this thing to happen. The only thing we can authorize is say, "Okay, now he can go back to the planning board and present his case there, which now he's gotta go through a lot of..."
So anyway, and I wanna make this really, really clear, because I know people are gonna get upset about this. Our job, you, an administrative appeal, you're saying that Ralph didn't do his job correctly, that he did not interpret the bylaw correctly. I read this. He said that educational uses are allowed, which is in our bylaw.
Or that he was given incomplete information and produced...
We don't know what he's doing.
We don't know.
So, and that's all the, and that's what, we're not saying that the project is good, that what, you know, what they plan on doing is valid. That certainly not would be our determination. Our determination as an administrative appeal solely is, did Ralph do something incorrect? And I read his letter, and he just said that educational uses are allowed, and that is in our bylaw. So I, so our hands are tied as far as what we can do, because it's only an administrative appeal.
Very good. It's complicated stuff. I appreciate it.
Yes.
I'd like to follow up. This all basically revolves, I think, around, my question's gonna revolve around whether it costs these people another $500 or not. Is it possible, town council, to, we have an application. If we dismiss it, that's the end of it, as we had done, have done actually. And however, if we continue it, then we go forward. Is it possible for them to add on anyone to the applicant pool here at this point so that we can formally continue it without dealing with this lack of standing issue? In other words, if you got butters, real butters, to sign on in some way, I know we can just say, "Okay, we dismiss it," and then they go ahead and get another $500, and they come in here at the appropriate time.
I think you have the discretion to do that, except, as you guys correctly point out, standing is one issue. The other, the hump you get over is number one. Is it a, is it right? And number two, as importantly as both of you have identified, this letter essentially does what I often advise builders, I mean, building commissioners to do, is say, "Educational uses are allowed in this district."
Right.
Not that this is an educational use that therefore is allowed.
We don't even know what he's implying.
He could've said, "Educational uses, club, private, not-for-profit, club, public, conducted-for-profit, convalescent homes, educational uses are allowed in this district." So the guy said, "Is an educational use allowed in this district?" And Ralph said, "An educational use is allowed in this district."
Well, I think his letter was a little bit more entailed than just that.
You mean the building commissioner?
No, the Burke, Mr. Burke's letter.
I'll go by his letter.
Yeah.
Ralph's letter.
Ralph's letter.
If you read Mr. Burke's...
That's what you're appealing.
But you can only appeal Ralph's letter.
So what I'm trying to find out...
Yeah, but if somebody says, you know, "I wanna do A, B, C, and D," and somebody answers, "Yeah, that's good to go."
That's not what Ralph meant. It said, "Would be allowed if..."
Well, this is, it was tricky. That's why we wanted you to make a determination.
But I'm trying to find out right now if you could just tie on some applicants, just to avoid the whole issue of Lance's lack of standing, so that that doesn't become another contention.
Yeah. I mean, potentially we could. I think there's others coming, so they may wanna go it alone.
Yes, but... Well, yes, but...
I'm in a butter.
Well, but...
I know you're a problem with it.
So, I think you need to continue it and then amend your application, but...
But the, the, but you still have to understand what it is you are trying to do.
Yeah, I understand.
You're trying to appeal the letter from Ralph solely. That's all we're here for.
But the letter from what?
Anything else doesn't really, it, it, is, is irrelevant at this point in time.
And I absolutely recognize that. I don't think that the meaning of the letter was entirely clear. It's very short. The preceding letter has some stuff that wasn't addressed by Ralph, and that's why we came to the board. We wanted to raise the issue and have the board make a decision.
You're probably better off to, I mean, we're not advising you legally, but to just start from scratch, because as the chair says, we're, even if we continue it and you come back, we're still only talking about whether that letter with that wording is right or not.
But it does seem incomplete. I mean, Ralph's response to this letter, I mean, which is quite detailed in terms of its usage, he only responds to one aspect of that.
But, and, right.
And so, that letter then shouldn't support the planning board? They shouldn't be able to, right?
It shouldn't, but that's the planning board's issue. It's, I mean, our, our issue is zoning and, and responding to your petition.
I think that was a big red flag, though, is that this was used as a basis to get to the planning board.
As a basis, right. Well, I mean, it's something they, they should consider.
Yeah.
You know, they should consider everything.
Yeah. But so, that would be the trigger point, then, the planning board.
They had a pre-approvision...
They're the ones that are going to...
...meeting with the planning board. Did you folks know about that?
Yeah, we watched the video. It's a really good video.
I would, do any of you plan to go to the November 28th planning board here?
Well, I'm on, I'm on all the emails now. Because I only found out about this from one of the neighbors' email, or article around, and I said, "Whoa, but you guys have a great system where you'll email everything, get all sorts of stuff."
I would suggest that you go to the...
I get, I get on, so, yeah. We'll keep an eye on it.
That's where it really counts.
But I do understand your position, and I think it was, it was, it was a little bit gray. And, to be honest, we just wanted to err on the side of bringing it to your attention.
And I, and I think, you know, in, in your shoes, I probably would have done the same thing. You want to, you want to, you want to get ahead of it.
Really don't want, really don't want a foul.
The problem with getting ahead of it is you might get too far ahead of it.
Well, that's okay. No harm, no foul.
Yes, right. Now, I mean, there are a couple of, of options that we have. We can, you know, again, we could re-vote to withdraw. You could, I mean, to dismiss, you could vote to withdraw. We could vote on it. Now, the problem with voting on it is if we vote and we disallow your, your appeal, that's, could have some negative context, because now we are then officially agreeing with Ralph.
Unless you, unless you deny it based on standing or...
We have a hard time with...
Rightness really would be the issue.
That means you didn't take it out.
Again, that would mean we dismiss.
Based on rightness.
Based on rightness.
And that's, that's your prerogative. I don't think that that's necessarily the wrong solution.
Which means we didn't really hear it. We didn't hear that.
Right. Yeah, I mean, like I said, I, I would hate to, to vote on this and vote against it, because I don't want it to, I don't want to perpetuate this. I think it's important that we can, that the, you know, that this process continue. And I don't want a zoning board decision being used again as, as more ammunition.
Yeah, what I think you're, I think you're going down a logical course, is, you know, maybe, maybe it's not that right.
But he, you didn't, he didn't say that he could continue it too, if he wants to.
I asked him, but...
Just that, just that singular point, I just wasn't deliberate, this argument about standing, because everything I read, I had standing, so, it's a new idea.
Would you prefer to see us dismiss it or, or continue it? Because as he says, if we continue, we're only talking about what this letter says. And, and you all leave unhappy, because we didn't address the issue that you're really after.
I think it's up to the...
Because if you want a continuance, you have to request it.
I think I'll consider this, that after the fact.
You want to do it?
No, you have to consider it before we vote, because if we vote, we're going to vote to dismiss it.
Well, I think if you don't think it's right, I think you need to...
That's what the board's going to have to, it's...
It's up to you, it's up to the board, I think.
Right.
I think there's enough information in the preceding letter that Ralph wrote to draw a conclusion that he was indicating allowance of potentially more than education, but I don't think it's totally clear. But I also think you could draw a different conclusion that, it depends on how you interpret Ralph's letter. If you interpret Ralph's letter as simply restating the rules and not authorizing stuff, then, yeah, then, then the appeal loses. But if you interpret Ralph's letter as saying, "All the stuff that Mr. Burke talked about and the stuff they're talking about, it is educational, it is allowed,"
Well, we can't, we can't really consider that, because the only reason we're here is to consider the appeal, whether it's right or wrong from an educational standpoint.
No, 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 that's not correct.
Yeah.
Well, that's what his letter says. It's allowed.
The board has to decide what Ralph's letter meant. And that's what we don't, we don't know what Ralph's letter meant.
Right, but I didn't see anything in Ralph's letter addressing, you know, sheltering 12 people.
Well, you have to look at Mr. Burke's letter.
No, that's, that's not Ralph's letter.
But it's in response to Mr. Burke's letter.
All he said in his letter...
It says after review, is what it says.
And, and their discussions.
That's not what I read.
So, I think Ralph conveyed to Mr. Burke either potentially an authorization of all the stuff they talked about and corresponded to. That's the way I would have potentially interpreted it. And I think that's why they brought it to the zoning board, why the, if the planning board, why have they brought a letter from Ralph that said absolutely nothing to the planning board as evidence that they've got authorization from the zoning board or from the zoning officer?
I interpret it the same way. I, I mean, I, I can't just say, "Oh, okay, this letter from Ralph really means nothing." I think it's a step toward approval within the larger process. And I know, I, I've read it, I know exactly what he says, but it does...
You read Mr. Burke's letter.
Yeah, but it doesn't, but...
Mr. Burke says A, B, C are all educational, and Ralph says D is educational.
But all they're doing is repealing this. So, so what's wrong in here? That doesn't, that's, that is not in our zoning bylaws.
Interpretation of educational and that it's non-conform, and that it's...
All they said, he said was, "Education is allowed in Westport, in residential area," and that is correct.
But I think he quoted it, and I was referring back to Mr. Burke's letter. And Mr. Burke's letter included a bunch of other stuff.
But all he said was, I mean, again, some...
Semantics. It's semantics. And that, that's why we came here, was to get a determination of what this letter meant. Is it nothing? Or is it an authorization? Because they, they treated it like an authorization. They took it to the planning board, and that's what they waved around and said, "Look, we talked with Mr. Schuza, he's given us authorization."
And they said, "Education is allowed in Westport."
Oh, they talked a lot more, they talked about a lot more stuff at the planning board.
I, I believe that.
They indicated that Ralph had approved all of it.
Right, well...
So, I think actions sometimes speak louder than words. Well, I think now it's a zoning board issue.
No, it is, yes. We can say, yes, Ralph did his job.
Because they went, this is what happened, they went to the planning board, and they indicated to the planning board, "We've got preliminary authorization. We have an administrative action indicating this is all allowed." And that's why that meeting went forward. And no matter what the, the isolated language in the letter is, we have to look at Mr. Burke's letter. Mr. Burke's letter talks about all the different stuff, the rehab, the boarding. Ralph's is an affirmative, an affirmation that that's all allowed. And then they take that affirmation, they go to the planning board, and they say, "Look, here's all the stuff we want to do. Look, Ralph said it was okay." And they say, "Okay, well, you just need to pass your building inspection or whatever." That's the story.
Before we move on, I just want to clarify, the voting members are the same as the, the previous jury, Tina Barber, I'm little, myself, Rajan Manarth, Konstenski, and Ray Elias. And if I didn't say that in the beginning, I want to make sure that everybody understands who the voting members are. Oh, public comment.
You vote, uh, your loss. Should I, should I sit down, sir?
Identify yourselves for the record, please.
Kevin Benditouli, I think I'm outside of the linear range. Six eighty-two, six eighty-six, River Road.
River Road?
River Road, yes. I just asked, to the extent that there was communications back and forth with suggestions as to the vote, I think there's a little relative weight associated with whether it's dismissed as not right versus not. And I think, I don't think you're wrong if you say that it's not right at this point in time, but I do think what Kevin was trying to communicate is that sort of bears on your interpretation of this letter. And I think you, maybe you can include language or work that into your vote, so you can address it. And I think that'd be one possible solution versus continuing it, subject to potentially adding some more of the butters, where we can sort of get the group together. So, all of this was brought to our attention sort of last minute, and I, I think that's sort of a, one of those two seem like the viable approaches that I'd suggest and sort of could get behind. But that, that's, that's the extent of it. The only thing that I, I weigh in on with respect to a determination is, in the language of Mr. Burke's letter, asking for a response, he specifically asked for a determination. And I, I've dealt with this before by virtue of my career in the land use setting. I'm sure there'll be debates back and forth in these, I just ask you that you keep in mind that this will probably come up again, whether it's right, not right. If it's not right now, later on, we'll be able to bring back the same arguments, which I think everybody agrees there's sort of a, a need for public input on it. I just, I'm, I'm wary of that, as I suspect that the other side will say, "Oh, it was right back then, and now the time has passed." And I think it's sort of imminent upon us to make sure that we can preserve that. And I, I'd ask you guys to do your best to preserve the ability to continue this discussion and keep in mind sort of how these things play out, which I know you all have more experience with. But that's, that's all I've got.
Okay.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman.
I think somebody's come up.
I'm sure.
Good evening. My name is Richard Burke. I'm an attorney in Bedford with Beauregard, Burke &amp; Franco. I represent Kenneth Weber, who is the prospective purchaser of the property. I have to say, Mr. McGough, you're right in terms of how I understood things. We did meet with the building commissioner, we explained what we wanted to do, because we were looking for his guidance on whether it should move forward. Mr. Weber had had previous communications before I was involved with the planning board, and one of the planning board representatives said, "Well, yes, this would be an allowed use under the sanitarium aspect. There are a number of aspects of the bylaw that are by right uses, so long as you get site plan approval from the planning board. Educational use is one, and nursing home, and there are others." In any event, we met with him, we explained what, what Mr. Weber wanted to do. I wrote a letter to him, as Mr. McGough said, explaining further what the proposal would involve, and we got his letter back, and we did interpret that to mean that what we were asking him to do, at least preliminarily, that he felt wasn't allowed use, subject to getting site plan approval. And we then moved forward with site plan approval. We had a preliminary meeting with the planning board, kind of an advisory discussion meeting is, we haven't had the formal site plan meeting yet. So, I, I don't know how far the board wants to go into this. I'm honestly a little unsure, because you, town council has said that he's advised you as, as in the previous case, that in his opinion, this is not right for your, putting aside standing issues, that it's just not right, because, and if that's your view as it was in the previous case, then we're all just wasting our time tonight, and there's a lot of people here. If everybody talks, we're going to be here for hours, and then you're just going to say, "It's not right." So, but I'm happy to give more explanation, if you think that would be helpful to the people that are here and to you, about what this project entails and why we do think it's an allowed educational use. I do think that Mr. McGough is right. We did interpret the building commissioner's letter to mean, in response to my letter and the discussions we had, explaining what we proposed to do, that he was responding to that and to my letter, not just saying, "Yes, under the zoning bylaw, education isn't allowed use." Anyone can tell that by reading the zoning bylaw. We talked about, and my letter has specifics about what this use entailed. But I do, I acknowledge that, you know, Attorney Blake is correct, that we haven't applied for a building permit yet. We have to, we have to get site plan approval from the planning board, and then we have to apply for a building permit. And I'm sure that I agree with Attorney Blake, that at that point, there could be an appeal taken by, by anyone with standing. So, and that would come first to you as the appeal body. So, but if you're going to rule tonight that it's just, as Attorney Blake recommended, that it's all premature and not right for your consideration, then I just don't want to waste everybody's time and your time.
Well, I think it would be, it would be, we'd all like to hear at least an overview
Okay. Happy to do that.
Because, I mean, all we've seen are, you know, some, you know, some emails and paperwork. So, a quick overview would, I think, would maybe help everybody.
Sure. So, Mr. Weber and his organization are looking to, to buy this property. It's a, it's a, it's going to be a reconfigured parcel totaling 10.7 acres, is what I understand. There would have to be a new plan filed with the planning board that would show new lot lines around the new, but it's a 10.7 acre parcel in the end, and it would utilize the existing buildings on site. So, what you, the, what is involved is 12 students, talking about 12 students. They are adolescents, so between the ages of 13 and 17 years old. The reason that there are 12 is that the, the students would live in the residence that's on the property now. It's a six-bedroom residence, so two students to a room is, is a maximum of 12. The, the students would live there. The students are, would, would be people that are referred either from their schools or their physician. They, they would have, they would have a diagnosis of some sort of mental illness. It could be anxiety, depression. Some will have substance use disorder issues, such as, could be vaping, could be marijuana, it could be alcohol. And as a result of the problems that they're having, their doctor, their family, their school would feel that they would benefit by being in a, in a living environment. So, ideally, most would be there for no more than 60 days. It's not a permanent living arrangement. There would be nine, during the daytime hours, and at any maximum time, there would be no more than nine staff there. The staff would be, they would be licensed teachers and also licensed therapists for the students that need either mental health or substance use counseling. So, you, the reason that we, we argued that it's not really a sanitarium, which is what the planning board first said, first of all, it's an antiquated term, but it's in your bylaw as an allowed use. And if you look at the, just the zoning bylaw, in the residential agricultural district, which is where this is located, the following uses are allowed as a matter of right: convalescent homes, educational uses, hospitals, nursing homes, sanitariums. So, when I looked at it, I said, "This isn't a sanitarium, it's an educational use." And the reason that it's an educational use is because, as I said, these are 13 to, you know, 17-year-old students. They're living there, but they're mandatory education age. They have to be in school, and they will get no less than six hours a day of educational services, which is required by law. So, while they're there, and, and the reason that they're there is that they also need counseling services. So, but they have to get six hours a day of education during the day and at least two hours a day on weekends. So, the primary function that they're there is educational. They all have to be in school, because they're school-age students, and they're getting the, the program would be in touch with their referring school that they come from. They would have to get all their schoolwork, and they all have to keep up with their schoolwork. And while they're there, for however long they're there, as I said, probably 60 days for most, they have to be educated by, by law. So, the primary function that they're there is to get an education and also to treat the issues that these young students are facing, these adolescents. education, and also to treat the issues that these young students are facing, these adolescents. So it is a predominantly educational use. The students, as I said, you know, are living there. They're, the buildings on the site now, for those of you that are familiar with it, you know, they would be living in the house. There's a building on our plans called the library building, and that's where the classroom education would be, and where the counseling offices would be. We provide on the site plan that we submitted to the planning board, there's some parking spaces. I think there are a total of 12 parking spaces. But, you know, I, I think that it's, we're not talking about building some big, huge, new building. One of the things that the planning board liked in our informational meeting was that we were going to incorporate and use the buildings that are there. Also, I should say that there is an orientation program before the students are accepted into the program. These are not students, they have to, one of the criteria is that there has to be a determination that they are not going to be harming themselves or others. So these are just young people that either have some sort of mental health issue, or in some cases, substance use issue, that they need help with, to get education while they get that help, to move on and, and go back to their, their life, and their school, and their families. The families, their families are involved in this program. It's the family, the parents that have to sign off on it. This is not a, a locked ward or something. The, this, this is, everyone that goes into the program is doing so voluntarily, the students and the parents. So, you know, that, that's basically what you're talking about, just young people that need help, in a more structured environment where they can live, they can get the counseling they need, they can get the education they need. And it is, it is an educational use. And the zoning bylaw, as, as town council said, which is why we, you know, we, we met with the building commissioner, it just says educational use is allowed. And that's what we believe that we're doing. And, you know, this is a need. I know, I think Mr. McGough said somebody could walk off the site. I mean, hopefully, you can understand that, you know, this is a program that does a lot of good for young people that need it. And it's a very small program. So, if you have other questions, you know, if I can't answer them, Mr. Weber is here, and we'd be happy to answer him, or try to answer him.
How do you overcome the prohibition of boarding more than four people on properties? It's specifically written in the zoning laws, 501, that you can't have more than four. Are you going to ask for a variance?
Schools, schools board people all the time. This is an educational use.
It's prohibited in the residential area, though.
Not, well, if, if this is an educational use, it's an allowed use. And we submit it's an educational use. And the students are getting an education while they're there. So, the permit use, it's not a boarding house. We're not, we're not taking in stray 70-year-old men, you know, that are coming in and buying a room.
Have you ever heard of boarding schools?
This is a, this is a school with students that need help, and they need to live there while they go to school.
So you won't ask for a variance?
No, we believe this, this is an allowed use. We have to get site plan approval under the zoning bylaw. And that's why we, we met with the building commissioner, because we wanted to know what process we have to do. If he had said, you need a variance, we would have gone a different direction. But our belief, and we believe he confirmed it, is that if it's an educational use, it's allowed.
So, as, as a business plan, has it evolved since April? Is that what you're doing?
No, nothing's changed.
So, you start out as a sanitarium, potentially, in the emails and the correspondence you got, you all see what was asked, a nursing home as well.
Mr. Weber wrote and said, this is what I want to do.
Is it a nursing home?
And he wrote, initially, he wrote-
He was mistaken for himself. My question for, I think-
Well, can I, can I answer, because it was mischaracterized. What happened was, Mr. Weber wrote to the planning board initially, as a newcomer to town, before even talking to me, and said, this is what I want to do, this is how my program works. Can I do it in this area? And he was told, well, yeah, you can do it. You know, looking at our bylaw, we think it would qualify as a sanitarium, and allowed use, subject to getting site plan approval.
He initially went-
And then, and then we, you know, when I got involved, I, you know, we, we talked, we talked to the building inspector then, for the first time. And I certainly advocated and said, I believe it was an educational use, because it's a mandatory education, and the students are getting six hours a day of education.
And it seems maybe that it has the closest, has the closest use that's identified in the table. The table identifies uses. All other uses that are identified in the table are prohibited. Not prohibited, you can't come in and get them, just they need to go before the zoning board. So what we have, and I just want to be clear on this, is they're fishing around for a use that can be as right, when it clearly doesn't fit. And if it doesn't fit, the table uses has a solution. Go to the zoning board, you all ask for permission. That's what they're trying to avoid. And, and one last question while we've got you on the, on the microphone. You said, when you were describing this, that you would have approval from their schools, correct? I think I heard you say that.
Well, no, the approval from, I said it's not an involuntary program. So it's not like the students are mandated by a court, for example, to go to this program involuntarily. These are students that have to voluntarily sign up, and their parents, because they're minors, their parents have to say, so what I mentioned, what I meant to mention about their schools, as I understand it, is that typically, schools are required to continue your education if you, like, say, you get sick.
If you're at a school.
If you get, right, exactly. So if you, say you break a leg, and you're in a hospital for a month, your, your school has to make sure, your principal actually has a legal obligation to make sure that you, you're keeping up with your schoolwork. So in this case, we would be in touch with the referring school. And even though there would be licensed teachers and licensed therapists part of the program, we're coordinating with the student school, because the student's going to go back to their school. That's the, that's the goal.
To their school, because it's not a school. Can you provide any other examples where tuition's paid by health insurance?
It's not covered. I, it's not, it's, we, parents are going to have to pay an additional-
How much do they pay?
Education.
I really don't think what, I mean, I don't think that really advances anything.
It's 50 grand. I think it's absolutely relevant. It's a for-profit business.
Before, you can't just yell from the back.
Sorry, sorry, sorry.
If you want to say something, you have to come up, identify yourself, make your comment.
Okay, I would love to. Thank you. I do apologize for yelling. I'm a real butter. I'm less than 300 feet away from that property.
What is your name?
My name is Matthew Forbes. I live at 468 Old Harbor Road, but I own property that goes all the way back and almost touches his property. The problem that I see is simple. He thinks the letter means something more than what it says, and they think it means more than what it says, and they're acting on it. And so therefore, that letter is more than what it says. That's the problem here, right? They're acting on that letter as we're good to go. And we know that because, Darla, I can't say your last name, sorry. You watched the video, right, where Jim Whiten goes, no, 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 stop, this isn't, he already said we're good to go. He said it's education, with Ralph Susan. So, he thinks it says something, they think it says something, and so does the planning board. They're acting on it as we're good to go. And so, I don't think it's just a letter that says, we allow education. I think it's a heck of a lot more than that, for sure. So much to say. As, as Kevin pointed out, this is, this is an inclusionary zone, right? You have to go outside and get the approval. We are clearly skirting that. Can we just call it what it is, just one time tonight? It's a halfway house. It's for drug-addicted kids. Like, that's the primary focus. We know that, because I think they charge like 50K a kid, a month. That's what it is. Is there education involved? Like, I would agree, yeah. They're going to go and have, what, now, see, he said teachers this time, but he didn't say that to the planning board. And the planning board, they called them, not teachers, but counselors and something else. So-
Tutors.
Tutors, thank you. So what, and I don't know your name, I'm so sorry, but the, the man who's trying to do this, I, I didn't get his name, but I did write down everything you said, and I'd like to read it. I think it's super relevant to everybody. Adolescents, plain English, he says, plain English, this is what we do. Adolescents 13 to 17 years old. For at least six hours a day, they receive educational services. So whatever school it is they are enrolled in, we would have tutors, there it is, on site, that would keep them up to date and get them ahead in their schoolwork. At the same time, these adolescents will receive some mental health counseling and/or substance abuse disorder counseling. The site is licensed by the state of Massachusetts, as described in the letter that you have. And then, also, folks would live there, eat therapy, eat therapy, and so on, and so on. Hilarious that we're now calling them students. It's good. Because last time, they were adolescents. You know who doesn't call kids adolescents? Teachers. They call them students. They call them students because they're students. These are not students. I mean, they are students, but not in this place. They're students in other schools. And so, one question that I would have, and I know you can't answer. I'm going to go put a toxic waste dump in the back. It's going to be awesome. But what I'm going to do is I'm going to have some kids be there for six hours, and I'm going to teach them all about toxic waste. And so it's education. It's cool. Obviously, that's not going to go down. So at what level, and this is the education to the, to the town lawyer's point, at what, at what point is education the deal? It's not the primary focus. It is secondary for sure. Why do we know? We know because it's being licensed by the state. 105 CMR, 164, 101. 24-hour diversionary services medically manage withdrawal symptoms of patients on a 24-hour diversionary service basis, and include 24-hour diversionary service of acute treatment and clinical stabilization services. It goes on and on and on and on. Now, these guys don't do that part, I don't think, but I don't know. I think what they do is like the next part, where they're for profit, which belong to nowhere near a residence, for profit, those kids then go and then rehab at a tremendous rate. And it's unconscionable. You don't want it in your backyard. It's like toxic waste. Nobody does. And I get it. And it's not that it's not a good service. Like, I see the value in it. But it's not in the zoning laws, just like a toxic waste dump isn't either. And that letter, huh, that letter is not a letter that says you can have educational service. That letter was written, and accepted, and acted on by the planning board as you're good to go. So the fact that we can't actually talk about that letter, and I'm not a lawyer, so, I think Kevin said it way better than me. But the fact that we can't actually do that, when that's actually the case, they said they acted on it. If that's not like, an action, I, I don't know what is. Everybody acted on it, except for this group. And I understand the rules, and I do think that they make sense, I get it. But I don't even think personally that, that this body should be doing anything with this. This should go to the people of Westport. If the people of Westport wanted a drug rehab center, you know where it would be? It'd be in the bylaws. It would be in the zoning laws. It's not. Because we haven't gone down that road. So, starting out in, as a nursing home, and then going to the sanitarium, and, and I get like the best fit is educational services, it's not, let's just call it what it is. It's a drug rehab center. We all know it. Like, I don't know why we can't just say it. Like, I think everybody here knows it, or most of us know that. And nobody wants it by there. So, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Good.
Any good comments?
My name, thank you. My name is Rose White. I am a direct-to-butter. I live at 415 Old Harbor Road, so right next door to the property. I mean, literally, feet away. And I have to, and I live there with my husband, and I have a, we have a 13-year-old and a 15-year-old. And I have to say that I just, hearing your comments really hurts. I just hope that you don't have a kid that ever has those kind of needs. And I'm not here, I wasn't actually planning to speak, and I'm not ready to say that I'm in favor of this. Because I, I don't know. I haven't gotten the information. We have just started, I mean, we heard about it from an article in the paper, which was sort of hurtful after all of this time of being Charlie's neighbor, of hearing about it that way, instead of it being a more collaborative process. So, we're not, I, I don't think we're ready to, to weigh in one way or the other, because we don't have information. And so, we have talked to Mr. Weber, and we are planning to meet. I would really, my point in being here is to say, I really encourage Mr. Weber to open up a dialogue, and, and be really honest and straightforward, and share information with the neighborhood. And, and I just, to talk about these kids, toxic waste, it just hurts.
I'm not calling them toxic waste.
You're comparing them.
No, I'm not. What I'm saying is that the zoning doesn't allow-
You just lumped all those kids with mental health issues.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's not the intent at all.
The issue isn't the kids.
All right, keep it down, everybody, keep it down. We do this one at a time.
I wasn't prepared to speak today. I am the realtor.
Name and address.
My name is Renee Welchman. I've been the realtor, who has been responsible for the sale.
What's your address?
I live in Little Compton, 226K West Main Road. And what I'm going to say is very personal. But my daughter went into a mental health facility in March. She was in a intensive program that was locked down. Then she went to a similar facility that was residential that was locked down. She had used alcohol, pot, tobacco, had suicide ideations, eating disorder. But she couldn't come home after that facility, because she needed to go to another facility, because there is, there is no insurance that would cover the support she needed at home. There wasn't the ability for her to go back to her school. And I couldn't get the resources that I needed to care for her. So she had to go to another facility, which is similar to what Mr. Burke is trying to open up. My daughter's been there since August 5th. She does get personal counseling, group counseling, yoga, meditation. She's passed AP Psychology, AP Communications, AP English. She is getting a full adolescent educational rehab facility, is immersive program. They take these kids to AA, NA, Recovery in Motion. They have to go out and do community service in the towns. They go to the local churches. And you know what? She's almost ready to come home. She's going to reintegrate. The whole point was that she was not thriving where she was. She was dying. And this program, if she had come home after the last one, would have been right back to where she was before, because there's research that Mr. Weber is a part of, between Yale and Harvard, showing that these insurance companies, they take these children, and they spit them back out, hoping they come back. And they give them a bed for two weeks, spit them out, and hope they come back. These programs allow kids to stay longer. And if they can stay longer and get the help they need, then they can actually come back to society and be the kids they were meant to be. Because these kids, they, they didn't get like this on their own. They got like this because of society. They got like this because of social media. They got like this because of COVID. They got like this for many reasons. But they're not toxic waste. They, no, I don't want to hear it. Because what you said, what you said was very loud and clear, but these kids, it was.
Hey, one, no, no, one at a time here.
One of the residents involved in this, Drew, you can't be kidding us.
I'm not kidding. I'm sharing a life story with you right now. Do you think that I want to pour my heart out?
Yeah, let's just have to do it so.
No, no, no.
This is an educational facility. She is in there learning how to have her a proper diet. And did you not hear the AP Calculus, Communications, English, and all the other things? It's all part of the program.
Hey, everybody, we have one speaker. This isn't, this is not a debate.
It's part of the program. It is the immersive program. Insurance covers the counseling piece. And as a parent, I have to pay for the boarding, the housing, the food, and everything else she gets in the home. So I think everybody's made a lot of assumptions that this isn't education, and he's just looking to make a buck, and that this isn't good for anybody. But I think before everybody starts making a lot more decisions, you should really dive in and look at a place like Turnbridge, where my daughter is, and actually maybe have a forum, like you suggested, to find out what is really going to go on there. What is the use of this property? How many children can we return to this society and help them? Because they're not just drug addicts. They're all good kids. I've met all of them. I've talked to their parents. I talked to them a night on the phone when my daughter calls me. They all, they all have dreams.
May I ask a question? So, the, the center that your daughter goes to is at, it's one of Mr.-
No, it's no relation.
Is it in?
It's in Connecticut. It was the closest place I could find to put my daughter- It's in Connecticut. It was the closest place I could find to put my daughter.
Is it in a residential area?
It absolutely is in a residential facility, yes. It's right in the neighborhood. It's right in the neighborhood. It has a house with a garage, with a yard, and some trees.
And how many students?
There's fourteen students living there. There's a full-time staff nurse. There's a full-time staff chef. There is a social worker on site twenty-four seven. They, they, they come, they leave, they get taken to their outpatient programs, usually at a hospital, probably in New Bedford, Fall River, or wherever's close by. They come home. They do have to pass a breathalyzer and, you know, do all of their things, and, you know, they do group programs in the house. They go out and do activities together. They go to church. They come back. They do all kinds of things. They're normal kids. They're normal kids that needed a little bit more than that they could get in a school environment, or maybe they didn't have the family at home that could take care of them. They, they just need more support.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Since I was just told that I equate kids to toxic waste.
Let's not repeat things.
You got a gentleman over there that hasn't spoken yet at all.
Okay.
Before somebody goes a certain time.
Yeah, Mr. Rennie?
Yes, Tim Rennie. Not quite in a median butter, but I'm fourth. Got 303 Old Harbor Road, just down the road, and I know the property actually well and know the owner. And I think that the key here, what I've heard is I think it's clear, as Matt was saying, that there's some questions about how this was pursued that has led to some distrust. And I think whether it's the right thing or wrong thing, having, you know, a real acknowledging that, and even for them to acknowledge that, is important. And the real issue is, okay, a variance for a very honorable, worthy cause, but is that right? Is that what the neighborhood wants? Is that what the town wants? Call it what it is, and they're very worthwhile. I've had experience with them. But they are drug treatment centers first and foremost. Kids are gonna be getting off on methadone and other things. They're gonna be medically administering things to help them withdraw. And they're gonna be coming off the property, so there are things to consider. And I think what's coming out of this meeting is those things need to be considered. It's great that you're allowing some public discussion about this, so that people know what they're approving. The zoning board knows, planning board knows what it is, and be proud of it. Don't try to snirk around it. Be proud of it. Like, you know, if you're gonna, if you're gonna approve it, but, you know, let's put it to a vote. And have people, you know, hear both sides of this thing, but to know what it is. It's not just an educational facility. It's not. I know that for facts. Ken Weber knows that for a fact. Yes, you're gonna be helping kids that are in desperate need of help and families that need help, but it's not primarily educational. Anyway, that's what I had to say.
George, did you?
I did have my hand up.
He's had his hand up for a long time.
Yeah, I worked at At Risk. We called it At Risk School for twenty-two years. And so, I have a couple of questions if you don't mind. So these are gonna be at-risk kids. They're gonna have drug, some of them will have drug histories and stuff like that. Will you be accepting people that have drug felonies or just misdemeanors if they have drug offenses?
Sure. Sure. Happy to answer any questions. I'd like to treat with respect and not scream death, though. I ask that of everybody because I'll do the same. Your question was misdemeanors, felonies, that sort of thing.
First name and address.
I'm sorry. Ken Weber, 52 Capewood Drive. He's from Massachusetts. Very rare that there would be a thirteen or seventeen-year-old with a felony. So, could there be some criminal offenses in one of these youths past? There certainly could be.
Okay, I was just wondering if you would limit it to, so that there would, you wouldn't have a felon. And as I understand it, there wouldn't be no one with violence, right? Isn't that what I?
Well, the admission criteria would be that the, dare I say, student, right, would not be of harm to themselves or others. And a whole litany of admission criteria that trained professionals would go through in order to be of most service. I think Renee did a good job kinda explaining how it works, right? These kids have already received whatever treatment they need to get to be stable, right? And there was a, there was an error in discussion here. There's no detoxification there. That's not the license. If you read the license, it doesn't talk about detoxification.
Do they have a curfew? Are they?
It's twenty-four seven monitor. There's a strict schedule throughout the day. And quite frankly, if you look at the daily schedule, the education that they receive is far more than eight hours a day. Because other things that they do within that, other than the schoolwork from their school, is education and considered to be. I mean, one of the things, music, that is mandated. PE, that is mandated in Massachusetts. So those times that aren't included in that six hours of just like schoolwork is also education. So I think that's where we were coming from, and we certainly didn't mean to mislead anybody. It was a discussion, my email, my discussion with Michael Burris, and the whole, what was it, nursing home? So that was based on my experience and my understanding, because if you look at Medicaid and Medicare, and those generally, mostly Medicare, kinda lay the law across the whole US for this sort of thing. And many cases that look at this use similar to nursing homes. So that's why, that was it. We're starting the discussion with Michael Burris. So that's how that whole thing came in there.
I have a question.
Yep.
Do you, will you be providing like a residential facility for your staff? It's twenty-four seven?
No, staff are all awake. They're there to work.
All twenty-four hours?
Yep.
Okay, so none of them are gonna live there?
Correct.
Would you be willing to discuss the detail of the plan with a community?
To be a good neighbor?
Yeah.
Sure. Yep. So, I reached out to the superintendent of schools, as you can imagine, having master's-level therapists there and master's-level teachers there who are skilled in things like de-escalation, right? Teaching kids how to breathe so that their anxiety doesn't get to a point where they can't do their schoolwork. So, we'll have skilled folks there. So I reached out to the superintendent of schools to train guidance or to train teachers or to come in and give education about anxiety, about depression, about addiction, about mental health, about physical, about eating. So, reached out, waiting to hear about it. Reached out to fire and rescue, because you can imagine they would likely have some concerns about it as well, right? Am I gonna get called all the time? Oh my goodness, you know, this is gonna go crazy there, right? And just to have a conversation with them about any needs and any relationship that we make. Same thing with the police department. So, we wanna be good community members. I mean, one of the things we kicked around, look, it's in your, you know, I mean, it's in Westport, right? There are kids in Westport that would benefit from going to this place. It is. Statistics will say that. It's not me just saying it, right? In this room, thirty-three percent of the people in this room have some mental condition that they're, that they're dealing with, right? They are. It's just adding stats. So we wanna be a good neighbor. One of the things we talked about was always an open bed for a kid from Westport, right? That's something we would consider. We wanna be good community members. We wanna be helpful in the community.
Sometimes you're referring to your staff as teachers.
Yep.
Sometimes tutors, sometimes counselors.
Yeah.
Why do you make that distinction?
So, in the zoning, I'm sorry, yeah, in the, in a planning board meeting, I was just choosing tutors. But I'm not a public speaker guy, right? So I was a little nervous. I'm gonna use tutors, whatever. The staff members there will be, I mean, Richard covered it, right? Master's-level licensed clinicians. So what are those? LICSWs, LMHCs, people trained in that field. Master's-level licensed teachers, right? Then we'll have a dietitian, right? Because part of it is good food. The other, the other component here would be farming. So, kids are here. They're in their devices. They're in their screens constantly. It's really good for them to be able to take care of a chicken, as simple as that sounds. That's very powerful, that lesson. Very powerful. Gets them out of their screen. It's the connection between food, themselves, the earth, the other thing is garden, right? So we'll do that there too. That's a very good thing for adolescents to be able to do that and understand how all that works. And quite frankly, also, under the educational component, if you teach it as a science, I mean, think about your science. I know when I, when I was in science class in high school, I learned about that. I learned about growing food and the like. So, again, that component of it can also be used if we document it and do it and teach it as part of science curriculum.
So, sorry to go back to the curfew thing, but I'm just, I just would like to understand.
I'm sorry. Yeah, I guess I didn't answer you.
I'd like to understand a little bit better. So, are they allowed to leave the grounds whenever they want? What about at night? What about?
No, they're not. So, let's, let's take the example, I'm sorry, Ms. McGaw? Okay. He used the, you know, kid leaving, right? Can a kid run out the door and leave the facility? Can they physically? They could, yeah. Is it likely, given all of the things that we do there? Highly unlikely. If the kid is agitated and wants to leave, there's all sorts of things that professionals, master's-level licensed clinicians or master-level teachers do to de-escalate that kid, right? So it's incumbent upon us to de-escalate that child and make sure they know why they're there.
But he could. They could run to my house, though.
I'm sorry?
They could make it to my house.
Sure. I, I mean, right, there's no, I mean, anybody could run to your house. Someone could park down the street and run to your house.
So, they can, so at night or whenever, I mean, there's always someone with them to see that they are staying in the facility?
Yes, and so, it's, it's, it's actually pretty interesting. So you have cameras, right? You have security, and you also have an iPad. And so, part of that process is checking that adolescent, right? And every fifteen minutes, a check is done. So you know where that adolescent is. And during the day, all of the movement is all, you call it planned, choreographed, orchestrated.
So, under your theory that if there's education involved, do you think that you can have other activities that are explicitly prohibited, such as growing marijuana?
Yeah, I'm not a lawyer.
That's the theory. You went through the, you went through all the allowed uses, and you grabbed on to education. And I just wanna say something too. I'm not here to litigate the virtues or whatever of this. That's not my issue. My only issue is following the zoning rules, following the procedural. And I just think that we're at a slippery slope here. If, if all you need is an educational component of some activity, all the other activities are automatically allowed, and you don't have to get a variance, I think the zoning board is losing control of the rules that the zoning rules were put in place to, to control land use. It's not saying you can't do anything. It's just saying do it right. If you're gonna have a non-conforming activity, come to the zoning board and ask for a variance. So when you scanned over all the uses and you said, okay, nursing homes there, educations there, we're doing a lot of education, but look at this, I can't board more than four people, huh, did you think you should go to the zoning board? And under your theory, can you do things that are prohibited now? Could you, for example, grow marijuana, which is in the zoning rules, under certain circumstances, and in certain places it is allowed? So do you think that you could grow marijuana now, under the guise of?
I can't answer that question. I'm not, I'm not an attorney.
You're a lawyer.
What I will say?
I don't know if the board wants to have a log back and forth with members of the audience.
No, I just, I think this is a fundamental question.
We don't grow marijuana as part of this program.
No, I think this is a fundamental question.
But it's legal to do so.
To bypass the zoning.
I'd like to ask another question. How many facilities do you, do you have or are involved with?
I have three projects right now.
Three?
Yep.
And they're operating?
Two are operating.
Okay, and how long ago has been operating roughly?
One a year and one three months, yep, prior to this. So I have, you want me to get back up?
Yeah.
I, I, prior to this, I have ten, ten-plus years in behavioral health and, you know, twenty, thirty years in management.
What I would like, why I'm asking the question, is I would like an opportunity for anyone, these folks and anyone, to find out from neighbors of your facilities.
Yep.
What effect it may have on them.
Yep.
And so, you'd be willing to give us some advice?
I'm gonna turn to counsel for this. I, I feel a little, you know, again, I gotta stress the toxic waste component to adolescents and children. I feel a little, I feel a little, okay. I feel a little discriminated against, quite frankly, and it's feeling a little hostile to me, so I'm happy to like write something or whatever, but I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna be asked questions about marijuana. It's not my purview. And not gonna stand here and have people equate adolescent children who need help toxically, so I'm not gonna.
No, but I do, I do think it's important to be able to have them independently verify some of the kinds of things that you're indicating, you know, that there's no problems in the neighborhood and that sort of thing.
I just think we're getting a little bit off track with the, the point that we're appealing here. This is a procedural question. Are they, are they gonna have uses that need a variance, that are non-conforming?
Well, actually, that's, actually. I thought you wanted just to get the information out about what they were doing.
And actually, you're, you're actually totally wrong. You're here for administrative appeal on a letter written by the zoning enforcement office. That's all we're here for. Because that's your petition. If there was something else in your petition.
Are we into the public questioning?
We're still.
You also wanted the public to be able to have an opportunity to hear, and that's what we're trying to do. We're not here right now to be debating what should be done or shouldn't. You wanna find out what they plan to do and the extent of it and so forth.
Could I just ask a narrow question? Because I don't, maybe I missed it, but I think you're on to a very good point. I didn't hear an answer to where the other facilities were so that we could look at them, because I'd be interested in that.
Yeah, I, I didn't ask them to indicate tonight where they were, but I'm hoping that at some point, we will be able to know that.
Thank you. I think that's a great suggestion. Appreciate it.
Can I speak? My name's Charlie Marrow, and I own the property at 435 Old Harbor. And there are a couple of things about this meeting that are, that are concerning. The first is that Ken Weber has been forthright. Ken Weber is not sneaky. Ken Weber didn't come into this town and try to find some, some way to build something, some loophole that he could drive a truck through so he could build something terrible in our town. Ken came to me, I've had the property on the market for a while, and he talked about building a facility that would help kids in Westport, help kids in the South Coast. He talked about building something that would respect the property that I own. And I mean this, like, this is, this is the real deal, is that this guy came and said, I wanna build something that will be good, that will be helpful, that will preserve what is there and not, and not turn it into something else. Very clear on the dynamics of a town that is, you know, complicated. And very clear about his right, based on our law, to be able to build it here, which is what this meeting should be about if we're gonna talk about the scope of what he's talking about doing. And I think that every one of you guys who is critical of, of the idea, considering the information that I've been listening to, should take the time to reach out to Ken Weber and ask him questions. Should take the time to ask the questions that have nothing to do with zoning but have to do with what this thing is and get clear answers about it before you, before you come running around yelling and screaming about what you think might happen, because you're, you're not right. And I also think that it's really important for us to remember that Westport is a changing place. It's a place that has laws that govern the change. It has laws that govern this type of project. We might not all agree with what, what happens. I might not agree with the color of somebody's house. It doesn't mean that they can't do it. And these laws do, do protect that right. And I think that this meeting and Kevin, your questions about whether he should grow marijuana are just downright disrespectful. They're not, they're not appropriate to a zoning board meeting, to a zoning board hearing. They're not.
Section 501.
If, if the zoning board is going to rule on whether or not, which they're not going to do on his, on the, on the project that Ken is proposing, they'll do it in a different forum. And I think that a lot of your questions here should be asked privately, carefully, respectfully, clearly, and get clear answers around them. I, I am particularly frustrated by the characterization that somehow this man came here and was looking for some reason to be able to do something that was exploitative of the community of Westport. It's fundamentally not true, and, and I worked with him very carefully as we described what could happen on that farm. And my input was, was heard, respected. My input was, I on that farm. And my input was, was heard, respected. My input was, I want people to drive by and it to look just like it does right now, better. My input was, I own thirty acres in a coax that I'm not selling, and I want to live next to something that's gonna be great. I want it to be, I want it to be nice looking. I want it to be, I want it to be safe. Ken, Ken listened to every single thing that we talked about, and he described something back that everybody can see in his site plan, I'm sure you're all gonna show up, that respects every one of my concerns. And I am not selling my land next to him. I'm gonna have a house there. I have a dog in this fight, a very clear dog. This nimby attitude of it should happen somewhere else, everybody in this community, most everybody, evidently not some people, knows children that need this type of service. Our, our South Coast needs this type of service. Renee had to go to Connecticut to find a place to put a kid. There is a good, a public good in this that I'm incredibly proud of, incredibly proud of. And I think that if you drive by that house and it looks beautiful, better, I think if, if the site plan is as we've described it, as it will be described, is conservative and respects the property as it exists, I think everybody in here is making an enormous amount of noise about something that they don't know enough about, because it's different, it's new, and it sounds awfully, I mean, how many times are you gonna say it's a rehab facility? It is not a rehab facility. And, and it is something that is going to be determined whether it can exist because of the zoning laws and whether, and whether the plan is approved by the, by the planning board. But it shouldn't face an ignorant criticism and rejection of it, because you're not fully informed about it, and that's entirely separate from zoning. And it should be respected from a zoning perspective if it follows the laws that are written into the Westport bylaws. And I don't think it's more complicated than that. And Kevin, I reached out to you, and you never called me back. I have plenty of information about this, and there's part of this, part of this, part of this issue is that, and Rose and I apologize, because there is a discussion around this that clearly will, will help or at least inform what everybody can think. But this reaction is exactly why those, those types of discussions are really complicated. You get out and start talking about this, and the whisper, the whisper world turns it into something that it isn't. And before you know it, a project is killed before it's had an opportunity to even get going. So, I guess, as a person who cares a lot about the property down in Westport, who cares about my property, who cares about my neighbor's property, who cares about the community, I can tell you that this project respects everything that I think is valuable to you guys and to me. And I think it creates a terrific opportunity for Westport to be better as a, as a city, as a town. And I think it's something that people can be proud of. It's not something to, that we're gonna look down on. And as a person who runs a business in Fall River and cares a lot about community investment, cares a lot about this part of the world that we live in, these aren't hollow words. He is doing something that is good, and it will, and it will be helpful, not just to the children that go there. I think it will be helpful to this community. So, thank you for, for listening to me.
When you sell it, will you and your kids be right next to it, like me and my daughter?
We're building a house there. Sure. The answer's yes.
Where? Which, which lot? Retaining some of the lots?
I own thirty acres, and I'm selling ten.
This is a legitimate question.
It is. It's a, it's a good question.
Marketing sold, because that was one of my questions out, because I know some of them are in Little Compton, too, which I have a bearing on being at the top of Long Hill as well, so we're going two far, one on River Road and one on Gold Hill.
Yeah.
Or are they subject to the sale, the Little Compton portions of it? Because it wasn't clear from the planning preliminary here, the planning of Little Compton, if all. And I, I can go at this point whether I should reach out to Little Compton zoning board and have them intervene, because I know that-
You can reach out to whoever you'd like. It's not my, it's not my job. I can tell you-
My question on the lots, or are the lots all in Westport, or are they in Little Compton as well?
The, there's, it crosses over the border.
So, there is some Little Compton involved. Does that gonna require approval as well? Is that something that the council or the zoning board should, should, right? And this goes to the council. I can honestly go and go, but I know there's reference into adjoining towns in the bylaws and the appeals procedures. Should they be given an opportunity to weigh in?
I'm not sure. I didn't know that there, there was a lot straddled the line.
It wasn't clear made, but I just got that indication. Is that something?
I don't know. I haven't reviewed the bylaws to see that. At this point, I don't know if the butters were notified. So, I, I don't know. I don't know. We'll be a butter.
Okay. Thank you all very much.
Quick.
Can I say something to your group? My name's Peter Ceruley. I'm a twelve-two. I'm a lawyer. I served as a city solicitor in two towns in Rhode Island. And what I see here is, this isn't a question of the worthiness of the project, the worthiness of, of helping children, adolescents recover from an illness or an addiction. That's a good, worthy cause. But what this is about is a legal disguise. You have a rehabilitation facility, a licensed rehabilitation facility in Massachusetts. That's a fact. That's their license. That conferred, got legal advice to create a legal disguise and to disguise itself as an educational institution, so that the worthiness and the appropriateness of this facility, a worthy facility in a residential community, would not be debated by the community, would not be subject to zoning review. It's a Trojan horse. It's a legal disguise. And everyone sitting in this room sees it. And I credit my brother, Mr. Burke, a good lawyer, of using, referring to the, the borders in that facility as students. Every time he referred to one of the borders that is going to be in the rehab facility, he referred to it as a, as a student, because they're of student age, and because they are required to get an education. But this is a legal disguise. Now, it's just a question of playing by the rules. And it's your responsibility to enforce the rules. The rules are there to protect the community. The rules were not created by you. They weren't created by me. But the rules have to be followed. And what this is an attempt to do is to disguise a rehabilitation facility that needs a variance, that needs to have an open, public debate, where people can talk about the value and how this would be important, and this would be good for the community, but not, you can't skirt the rules. You can't, the process is there for a purpose. And I think you've got to decide, this, I, I think that you have to decide tonight, what is the best way? What is the best way? And you, you, you touched on it at the beginning. What is the best way to make sure that this Trojan horse doesn't enter? I mean, there, there was basically a confession here tonight, that, wait a minute, we're relying upon Ralph Suzer's letter. Ralph Suzer's letter is not meaningful. We have a vested right. We're taking Ralph Suzer's letter to the bank. We've got our foot in the door, and we're not gonna get it out. And whatever you rule, you know, the, on appeals, on an appeal, the party that prevailed at the lower level always has an advantage. So, the decision you have to make tonight is, is a critical one, because if you make the wrong decision, this, this debate, this public debate may come to a quick end. So, I don't, I certainly don't think it would be a good idea to decide this on the merits, because that could actually work against the appellant and against those in the community that want this for-profit business. That's what it is. It's a business. It may have a worthy cause. I mean, you know, hospitals have worthy causes, too, but they're, they're for profit. Pharmaceutical companies have worthy causes, too. They make drugs that help people, but they're for profit. And-
Can we wrap this up?
Yeah.
No, no, no. I'm not cutting it off.
No, no, no. I, absolutely, absolutely. I, I've, I've said my piece, but I, I think we've got to be careful not to end this process. Thank you.
Anything you haven't said yet?
Yes, there is. I was slandered twice, so I just wanted to love to respond. The notion of my analogy for the toxic waste has nothing to do with the kids or the daughter or the worthiness of the project. I tried to come up with the most ridiculous thing I could think of, where somebody could come in and say, hey, we're gonna do this, but it's, but it's education. We're gonna slide it past you. That's all that was. Truly, that's all of it. It was, it was just that. But, but also, you know, Ken, and I'm not attacking, but, but the way that this all came about was not the collaborative that you had, Charlie. I almost bought your land, man. You live across the street. It wasn't that collaborative thing for the rest of us. The rest of us watched a planning board meeting where they were like, Ralph says it's cool. Let's make sure we have the right number of parking spaces and we're good. That's what that planning meeting was. And so, I would love to have a discussion, right? It's just for us, like, or for me. I just felt like this thing was just gonna sail, slide right on through, like, all's good. And I didn't, I've never talked to Ken. I don't know what this stuff is. You know, I have no idea. So, that's how it came across for, for the butters.
Okay, thank you. Okay. I, I'm glad we got through this, because it's important for everybody to hear everybody's side of this. And then there are multiple, there are multiple sides to any, any issue as, as important as this. The way I see it, we only really have two options at the moment. We can either continue it, because we have issues with procedural problems, or we can continue with Attorney Blake's recommendation to dismiss it, because it's, it's premature. So, that's, I don't think, we can't make a decision now, because we still have the issue of the petition not being a butter. And so, we have to, so we certainly have to address that. So, we can either, and again, like I said, there was a, there was a lot of discussion, there was a lot of, but really, this boils down to just one issue. It has nothing to do with if it's a school and it does other things. It's, was Ralph's letter incorrect? That's all that we're talking about here. We're not talking about, is it a good project? Is it gonna be good for the neighborhoods? Is it, it's strictly an administrative appeal. Was Ralph's letter incorrect? And that's all we can, that's all we can vote on, because that's all the petition is for. And we have to understand, and, I mean, I could've cut all the discussion off, because a lot of the discussion had nothing to do with the petition of Ralph's letter. But I think it's important, and we heard it all, because it's all important that we get, that we understand what our fears are, you know, what the pros and cons are. So, having said that, then, how does the board want to, want to-
I'd like to say continuation. If we consider it a continuation, we have two choices there. The applicant can request a continuation, or if we have reason to do so, we could just continue it on our own, because we want to. If we chose to, if the applicant did not want to request a continuance and wants us to dismiss it, I would just wonder what we would use as a reason for wanting to continue it, from the board's point of view. Do we need more information? Do we wanna discuss more meaning of Ralph's letter and the background for it? So, I'm just saying, we need to come up with a reason.
Well, I, I think in this point, I think the only one that could ask for a continuance would be the, would be the petitioner, because we're not looking for more information.
Right.
The petitioner, because our attorney has already told us that there were two major issues with this, with this petition.
That's, that's my point.
And, you know, we have to take that as, as fact until shown otherwise.
Well, there's two major issues. One, whether it is ripe. This is the place to, and then the other is the standing issue. So, if the petitioner was to request a continuance, would that give him time to work with the butters to make sure that the, that issue was not a problem, that standing was not a problem? And would that be, would that be
Well, I mean, that would be certainly one, that would resolve one of the issues as far as he could get other actual butters to sign on to the petition, and then that would alleviate that aspect of it. When we're talking about slippery slopes, and I know somebody out there mentioned it, this isn't, this is, if we were to, to actually act on a informational letter from the, from the zoning enforcement officer as, as a, as a decision, then every time that the zoning enforcement officer issued a informational letter to the planning board or to somebody else, then that would be subject to then appeal. Then that's what we would be talking about. So, you know, we have to consider this as, as we do this.
But we're being asked if we believe that Ralph's letter was correctly interpreted the zoning bylaw. That's, that's what we-
That's all we're here for.
Yes or no on. And I personally think that it did not correctly interpret the zoning bylaw. I'm just one person. And I'm, but I also agree with you and with most people here that this needs to be, well, we can either take that vote right here and now, or I suppose they could ask for continuance and clear up the standing, or are there other options? I mean, I, I don't know. But I personally will go on record saying that I do not think that Ralph's letter was the correct interpretation of the zoning bylaw. It did not take into all the, into account all the things that were in Mr. Burke's letter. It was incomplete.
Do you have, do you want to ask for a continuance, or?
If you were going to dismiss it solely based on the standing issue, which I wasn't given notice of that ahead of time, yes, I would appreciate that. However, I do think that it will be remedied quite easily, for your reference. But no, I think that you've really honed in on the question is what, which is one of our requests, is what does Ralph's letter mean? Is it something, or is it nothing? And if the board decides that it's nothing, that's a perfectly good resolution from our-
It's not a matter of whether it's something or it's nothing. It's a matter of whether what he said was right or what he said was wrong. And that's all we're here for. Did he say anything in there that violates zoning?
I think he did.
Okay, well-
And that's why I appealed. But if you come to a different conclusion, that he did not confirm approval of any of the items listed in Mr. Burke's letter, and simply stated a fact that, yes, educational uses would be permitted, not affirming that the uses are authorized, or indicating from a town's perspective that they're authorized, then I think that's a result that's logical as well. But we can't come out of this with Ralph's letter being relied upon by the planning board, being relied on by the buyers, being relied on by the sellers, and that reliance being incorrect when compared to the zoning rules. Basically, saying, yes, it's okay to have these uses that aren't prohibited, even though you haven't, the course is variance. If they have uses-
Well, I mean, we talked about this.
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
So, so what's your preference? Do you want to continue this for, so that we can clear up the issue of who actually is a signee of the petition? And that would then alleviate that aspect of it.
If you were going to dismiss it solely based on that issue, I would-
Well, I mean, that's, that is one of the-
Well, you could dismiss it based on ripeness, in which case you would have to find that Ralph's letter is not confirming the proposals in Mr. Burke's-
You know, and the problem, we can continue it now, but we still may, you know, we're gonna be back here arguing in the same, the same issue. But at least part of this will have been cleared up, as far as that, the appropriate person is, is on the petition.
It just gets rid of one of the issues.
Right. It gets rid of one of the issues. Right, it gets rid of one of the issues.
Don't have to argue about that.
That's why I made the appeal, is I know it's a complicated issue, and I wanted you to have the opportunity to make decisions that were best for the town and best for the town procedurally. You know, I think the issue raised by Mr. Sorelli, he crystallized it. I mean, we have rules for a reason. And to not follow those rules and those procedures, I think, is the flaw here.
Right, but we're still going around the circles. Do you?
No, no, no.
All asking, do you want to ask for a continuance or not?
Based on, based on the standing issue.
Yes, okay. Marie, is that?
Yeah, he has to do it right.
Yes, she has a form.
Can this continuance be indefinite until the, no, what is the timeframe?
No, we have to sign a date.
Pardon me?
We have a clock on an appeal. If it was 90 days and it was, the appeal started in September 20.
In the continuance, you're also going to sign that this then adjusts the end date that we are required to make a decision. So if we move this out by a few weeks, then.
Yeah, but that being said, if the board is of the opinion that the letter, in fact, didn't confirm anything, which is an interpretational thing.
Right, and that's where we, board hasn't done that yet.
Okay. So do you think a continuance is a better idea?
I think it solves, it reduces the issues down to one.
Okay, that's a good point. I agree.
And one very valid issue that, and obviously the board has, we would have to discuss it because it's not, it's not clear. It's not a, it's not, most of these administrative appeals are pretty obvious. Either we administer the zoning bylaws correctly or incorrectly. It's yes or no. There's no middle ground. In this case, it's how you read, what do you read into it? And so there's room for discussion there.
And that's why we have a zoning board of appeals.
I would like to also say another reason I would like to see a continuance, if that's what you want, is to give the opportunity to help, as Ralph's who's here, to give his side of things.
Yeah, and I just want to, you know, say very clearly, I don't think Ralph did anything wrong.
That's not what we're talking about.
Exactly, but from what I've heard, Ralph's a great guy, so I don't want to be interpreted that I'm a devil Ralph.
So what date can we, we're not going to do it at the next meeting. We've already got too much on that already.
Then we have nothing scheduled right now.
If it has to be within, was it 60 or 90 days?
I'll wrap this up and I'll be back.
If he's going to allow a continuance.
No, you have to sign.
Here, take my pen.
Because we have to put a date, we have to.
We have to sign a date.
For when we continue it doing, was it going to ask you?
Do I pick a date?
No.
Maria will give you, she asks us when we're available.
I won't be available for any date. I won't be available for any date you pick, so the five of these, we're going to have to figure it out.
What? In terms of a continuance, would we not need to have, well, no, I guess I'm thinking myself there. I was going to say, would we not need to have an actionable time, you know, the zoning, the planning board did something, Ralph did something. But I guess not, because we're still, he's dealing with whether this letter is.
Well, the planning board is meeting on this, on the 28th.
Of no matter.
They're having, of no matter.
So. But I think that's now really immaterial to us. That was my thought, is if the planning board.
So they didn't want to do it maybe the week after that.
We'd have something to appeal. But if we continue it, it's still this.
So you guys all thinking about what kind of date?
Why would we want to meet before that?
Oh, you might want to, yeah.
Well.
It seems like it'd be better to meet.
I don't really want to meet before that. But again, even if we meet after, they do something, we're still.
Excuse me.
Everybody, everybody, if you're going to talk, can you go in the hallway?
I'm available any Wednesday in December.
So we wouldn't want to have, we wouldn't want to reconvene prior to the planning board's meeting on the 28th?
The planning board is waiting for a decision from us.
Right.
So they're not going to have a hearing unless they get one from us.
Right, it seems to me we need to meet.
I don't, I don't, I mean, with all due respect, I don't think that's true.
They might just continue it.
They already have it scheduled for the 28th to do a site approval. So that has nothing to do with us.
No, that doesn't, but.
Right, but I mean, we've got Thanksgiving in there too, don't forget.
Oh, thanks, when is Thanksgiving? Oh, that's the 23rd.
23rd.
I thought it was the 23rd.
I'm going to be out at the 29th, the 28th, 29th. So you need it to.
So that goes, that brings us into December. I want to make sure Jeff is available to.
I'm available on December 6th, if that's the next one you want to do.
Yeah, we don't have anything scheduled that far out right now.
No.
I'm available December 6th. Jerry?
I think, well, I think that's what I'm trying to get my calendar up.
December 6th.
Yeah.
Ray?
Yep, good.
George?
Yes, December 6th, yeah.
Is that okay for you?
I'm trying to rapidly check.
It's going to be potentially critical when he's unable to be there.
But George sat in today, so he would have the.
And what you'd have to do is you'd have another petitioner who would sign on, and hopefully that petitioner would also be available on the 6th. Although it wouldn't be.
Yeah, I mean, I want to make it easiest for you. I think if I don't understand any of the people who do some things, so rather than.
I can remember the date.
As long as all our arguments, we agree, not arguments at once, are in agreement, I think that's probably the easiest thing for the board. If somebody else signed on it.
Yep, okay.
I'm sure you don't want to start from scratch right there.
No, no, it's a continuance, right.
December 6th?
December 6th.
Maria?
Yes.
I think, Jerry, you're making one, right?
What is that beep 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 being going?
Okay, we have to make a motion.
This is my new phone. I can't stand it. I can't stand it.
Make a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to continue this hearing until December 6th.
That's 6:30.
6:30.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No. So we'll see you all, I won't, but we'll see you all December 6th.
You want?
I won't be here, we'll talk about that shortly. I'd like to be here for a while. No, I mean, it's, this is important stuff. This is really important. Okay.
And you got the sweatshirt.
Okay, everybody, can you clear this? We still have, we still have business. Okay, we're going to do real quick, election of officers, since we haven't had that in, we should have done it months ago. So I'm going to start this in reverse order, what we always do. Let me nominate the zoning board chair. We have a nomination.
I'd like to nominate Roger Menard as planning board chair.
Okay, now, before I even talk about this, I am not going to be available for probably at least a few months. So I won't be available a couple of months, anyway. If you still want me to be chair after that, then I will accept it.
We still want you to be chair, but I won't figure it out.
I want you to be chair now, and then I'll tell him as needed if I'm elected to vice.
Do I have a second?
I don't know if we can.
I'll second you being chair.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No. Okay, I accept it, but again, okay, I nominate.
What's his name?
I nominate Jerry, Jerry for my chair. As being somebody who's been here for 50 years, I don't think there's anybody who has background that Jerry does.
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Secretary. Now, again, I want to stipulate that the secretary's job, we never plan on having a meeting without Maria.
Never.
Never. If, in the event that we do, then we will rely upon the video. And the only thing that I believe, and Maria, back me up on this, is sometimes in a video, you can't necessarily tell who made the motion and who seconded because everybody's talking. I don't, I don't expect the secretary of the board to be taking copious notes. It's really more of the fine tuning of making sure that we understand who made the motions, who, you know, who voted for what. So Barbara, I know you're not planning on.
I am not, I'm finished in June.
Finished in June. So it's going to be up to one of you two to, you know, would you take on a job of secretary?
Yeah, I'm a primary secretary.
Well, that's not, I mean, they have to do.
I don't do shorthand.
Under the condition, all you have to do is.
It's always a recording.
Yeah, as long as the, as long as we have a video, because, believe me, I don't take down every word either. It's impossible.
Come on, you've done it in the past.
Oh, yeah, no, I did a really crappy job. Wait a minute, wait.
I will do it through the end of my term.
I nominate Constance, if you would, if you would accept it.
I will accept.
Okay, I nominate Constance. Do I have a second, Constance?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And I will do it until the end of my term. I hope I have to.
She gets half of the way there.
Thank you.
Not only that, but then in July, we'll vote for another one.
Oh, good.
You'll be good. Okay. Approval of meeting minutes for September 20, 2023. Maria has provided meeting minutes for September 20. I make a motion to approve the meeting minutes as provided by Maria. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye.
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 That's unanimous. Request of the planning board for comment on the Corey Ridge Estates on the Westport Lakes and on 435 Old Harbor Road.
I'm going to say something about that.
Okay.
That's what, Westport Lakes, right?
Yeah, there's three of them.
No, Corey Ridge.
Never mind, no, no, I'm talking about Westport Lakes.
Wait, say that again.
There's Corey Ridge Estates. Do we have them here?
Yeah, we saw.
We do have them here somewhere. Well, they're already here.
Every time one of these comes in, if we're not meeting anytime soon, I usually send an email to everybody.
I know, it did, and I thought it was something that I wanted to pay attention to, and I somehow completely.
Corey Ridge Estates proposed to divide the property into four lots on 5.75 acres. The owner proposed to construct a 16-foot-wide gravel roadway, will service on-site, well water and septic, as well as underground electric telephone and communications. So this is just a site division, subdivision.
Yeah.
So for corner road.
Subdivision.
Right.
We don't normally get into subdivisions.
No.
No, unless there's a reason for it, or as I say, there's a question of act of its own or something.
Though I recommend that we make no, no response to Corey Ridge Estates.
And there was the, oh, was this one, there was something?
Westport Lakes. Jerry, you had something on Westport Lakes?
Yes. That, that property came before us years ago to put a golf course. It never got finalized, never got dealt with. But now these folks have been going to the conservation commission for a few months prior to going to the planning board, okay, which is normally goes the other way around. But it's a chicken and egg kind of thing, because planning board wants to know something about conservation at the same time. So anyway, now it's coming up before the planning board, I'm going to make the same objection as an individual when I attend that hearing, that we do not have a bylaw that covers that kind of project. That the bylaw that they're using, which was successfully used by a developer back around 2006 or '07 off of Tickle Road area, Oak Ridge Estates, they're using that, oh, God, independent living and assisted living, okay? And if you read the bylaw, it tells what the purpose of the bylaw is. And back in those days when that bylaw was passed, there seemed to be a lot of situations, old mills, old schools, larger buildings being put into reuse for senior housing and congregant housing. I was the director of the housing authority in Westport for 13 years, so I was kind of familiar with the terms that were used at the time. And congregant housing had much more to do with people sort of living in their own separate spaces, but they come together for activities, meals, things like that. Be a variety of things like that. But anyway, these are not like that at all, just like Oak Ridge. This is, these are individual homes. I believe it's 26 duplexes.
Yes, it's a bunch, yes.
Okay?
Yep.
And they're all separate, so there's nothing congregant or whatever about them. I've discussed this with the planning board, not for this, not for this project, because they haven't had a hearing yet, but for another project that was not too long ago, proposed very similar to this, like in Oak Ridge. And it eventually got withdrawn, the developer for this other project withdrew it. But it's the same type of thing.
So what's the issue?
The issue is there's no bylaw that allows this in this town. So that's the point of you from this point, from us.
We should note that, and then they can respond to it.
Right, and the planning board has discussed.
You can just dictate it, Roger, and then I have to type it in anyway.
What's that?
I have to do it on the computer, sending in the, yeah, so you can just.
So we just say that there's no zoning bylaw that allows this.
That is appropriate.
That is appropriate with this.
To this particular type of use, and let the planning board decide.
Right.
They've already discussed it, and several of them agree. And they, that was prior to the actual hearing. It was sort of a preliminary discussion.
Oh, boy, and this other one is the Old Harbor Road.
Yeah.
So we ought to do, we need to do the same with that. Right?
Oh, wait a second. Right.
By the way, I'm not suggesting that this board, as a board, you know, piggyback on what I just said. I said from the beginning, I'm doing it as an individual.
Yes, but still, it'll then require the planning board to then.
Right, someone who kind of looks at zoning things.
Okay, are there any other business before we, we have to go to executive session.
We have to do number five. We need a request for comment on 435 Old Harbor Road.
Oh, that's, I said the same thing.
Which is what that is.
Yes.
Oh, it's the same thing? Oh, okay.
That it's.
Sorry.
That, the same comment, that's what we're just talking about here.
Right, yeah, that there's no zoning bylaw.
You know, put it back on, you know.
We haven't, we haven't discussed or determined whether or not there's an appropriate.
We haven't made it, we haven't even voted.
No.
No, 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 no.
But by, by telling them that, what we do or say is that it's not obvious that this, that this conforms to Westport zoning bylaw.
Or at least there's some question behind it. What do you want to say, like?
I know that the Board of Health also was asked for comment, and they pretty much.
They ask everybody. That's what they should.
Right. The Board of Health declined to comment, because they have more information. Okay, I think we're done.
Pursuant to general law 38, section 28a3.
We need to adjourn the regulatory day.
Well, I think I need to, I need to announce it, we need to vote on it, and then, right. But we need to go into executive session pursuant to general law 38, section 28a3 to discuss the land court litigation regarding Spinnaker Way LLC, where discussion in open session will have a detrimental effect on a town's litigation position, and the chair so declares. So what I need is a rule call vote to allow us to go into executive session, and they need it by name. Jerry?
Yeah, Jerry Cuttino, yes.
Barbara Ponce-Lolo, yes.
Roger Menard, yes.
Constance Gueye, yes.
Maria Lyons, yes.
And who made the motion when you said that?
There wasn't, was there a, the motion was Jerry?
I made, I made a motion to go into executive session.
And then who seconded it? Jerry?
Does he vote?
There was no.
It wasn't a second, so somebody, somebody seconded it. Jerry seconded it, okay. So you have to, well, yes.
George Stelges, yes.
Okay, so we are now. Okay. So, we are now in executive session, and we will be adjourning from executive session.
And not coming back.
And not coming back.